Good morning, everybody. We are going to jump right in. So, oh, because also we do not have anybody from the public who wishes to speak this morning. So we will begin with a presentation on our communications. And I'll now hand it over to Dr. Tiffany Brown.
Good morning, everyone. Nice to be with you. Really excited to introduce the work of our communications team this morning. And in order to do that, their sharing this morning will be really be a reflection, a looking back to allow us to look forward. And I wanted to highlight that much of the work that this team will share with you really began in a different way in March of 2020, which was a really challenging time in our district. The whole district shifted and the world shifted during that time. And in that space, we recognized that we didn't have the communication systems that we needed to really keep a flow of information going when we were not every day in person with one another. And so we really embarked on a period of learning. And what I would say is building the plane while flying during that time, which prompted us to seek input and to seek a communications audit. And we did that in the early part of 2021 as a way of listening to what we were hearing from community and wanting to have some new ways of stretching into a two-way communication with our community. And so we used the information provided by the audit as a bit of a formative assessment, a checking in on how we were doing and gathering some information that would allow us to move forward in our communications work and also our community engagement work, both. And so when an informed source gathers information and gives you some recommendations about what you could do in the spirit of doing better, we wanted to use that information. And so the years since have been a process of using the information that we learned during that time to the extent that it feels appropriate for us. The recommendations that came through the audit were recommendations. And like any good report, we use what applies and we consider all that is shared and we move forward accordingly. So through that time, we recognized that there was a need to have communications, a communications team and an engagement team. And that was actually one of the recommendations that came through the audit. Those two things are not one in the same. And that we've been on a process of learning into that over the last years. We have a need for both. We have a need for two-way communication that reaches our community and has feedback loops attached to it. And we also need a way of gathering input from staff internally and sharing things that are important for us to share. So fast forward to October of 2023, when we were really fortunate to welcome Elvia Canno to our team, who feels like she's been here forever, but will just be in a couple of months approaching her one year anniversary in Long Beach Unified. And bringing Elvia on board was really a goldmine of a person, both in the quality of person that she is, but also because she brought to us a background in communications and community engagement. And it's rare to have both in the same professional expertise. Typically, people have had focus in communications or in community engagement, but not both. And so as Elvia entered in with all we had learned over the years from 2020 to now, the communications audit, and now her new expertise alongside Lucy Salazar, who's been leading the work of equity, engagement, and partnership. And I have the good fortune of working alongside both of these smart women. And then matching with the work that Chris Itzen has been doing. And I would just be remiss if I did not say that from 2019, when Chris joined the communications team and really with an emphasis in highlighting our social media platform and our ways of reaching out, he has been nothing but a champion for all of us in the ways that he has stretched into helping us be better communicators, have a more developed brand, and also have new ways that are connected to both students and community members and staff. And so I just really want to highlight Chris. He probably doesn't want me to highlight him, but that makes me want to do it even more. Because in the dark days during the pandemic, when there were just a small group of people roaming around this building, Chris and team were here the whole time, thinking about how we could do better. So I'm really pleased with that as the platform for their presentation today to welcome Chris and Elvia, as well as other members of the communications team, who are, some of whom are seen and not heard today, and some who are not present. Super excited to welcome you and to allow you to share. They just have so much information to share. And they want engagement with you. And they really want to share what they've brought to share. So I'll respectfully pass it over to Elvia.
Sorry. Thank you, Dr. Brown, for your kind words. Good morning, esteemed board, board president, Craighead Board Vice President Otto, board members Lopez, Miller, and Benitez, and Superintendent Baker, Deputy Superintendent Brown, and senior team. I am Elvia Canno, Director of Communications. And this is Chris Itzen, Assistant Director of Marketing Media Services. Together with our fantastic team, we lead the communications, marketing, and social media efforts for Long Beach Unified, a challenging but exciting endeavor. And it's our pleasure to be before you today to provide an overview and an update on the progress of our communications department. We kindly ask, if at all possible, to hold the questions until the end as we believe we will cover most, if not all, of your questions during our presentation. Chris and I will take you through our department's communication journey, showing communications, marketing, and media services where we were five years ago. We will also provide an update on the recommendations from the communications audit conducted by the National School Public Relations Association in 1921. Additionally, we will showcase where we are today, how our work has evolved and expanded, and share our plans moving forward, highlighting how they are shaping the future. This journey is encapsulated in the title of our presentation, "Navigating Success: Looking Back, Moving Forward, Shaping Tomorrow." What is the role of the communications department? That is the question. The communications team at Long Beach Unified plays a crucial role in ensuring clear, consistent, and timely messaging across all platforms. We manage internal and external communications, media relations, incident support, and website oversight. Our internal communications efforts include the school bulletin, district news articles, and monthly superintendent communications, as well as support for school messenger, Board of Education meetings, and Peachjar, just to name a few of the responsibilities that we do. We also coordinate logistics for major events like back to school and manage communications for various initiatives, including Vision 2035 and the Black Student Initiative. In crisis situations, we provide rapid response and consistent messaging, coordinating closely with the senior team and school safety. Our media relations work includes developing relationships with reporters, strategic and consistent messaging, and responding to the many media inquiries that sometimes arise during incidents at school sites. Additionally, we oversee the main website and support school site and department webpages, ensuring effective marketing recruitment and enrollment efforts. The communications team at Long Beach Unified School District, as I mentioned, plays a major role. At the district here, communication is everyone's responsibility. We believe that effective communication is a shared responsibility. While our department leads the communication efforts to ensure that messaging is consistent and timely, it is essential that everyone within the district participates in this endeavor. Principals are the communication leaders at their school sites. Directors manage communications within their departments. And level offices handle communications within their teams and school families as needed. Our role is to provide guidance and support to ensure that all these efforts are aligned and effective. This collaborative approach ensures that our messaging is unified and that we can respond promptly to the needs of our school communities. Communication is always ongoing, continuous, and ever-evolving, much like how the news media never sleeps. As a communications department, we're always learning, working on strengthening and improving everything that we do.
Now I'm gonna, it's my pleasure to pass it on to you so I can take a little breather.
Thanks, boss. A little unnerving, I have to say, to be on this side of the camera. But for this, but I'm usually sitting in that room watching. But hi, everyone. Good morning. Very happy to be here. And for this portion, building off of all the work that Elvia has shared already, we're going to break down a little bit of the role of our marketing and media team and what we do. And we're very unique. I would say we are unique nationwide in what our leadership, you as the board, have invested in to be able to build communications and tell our story of our diverse community. Our team runs everything from district social media, live streaming like this meeting right now that's being live streamed in four languages, all video production, cable television, branding, podcasting, graphic arts, marketing and ad campaigns for enrollment and hiring, all kinds of different initiatives. On top of what's really unique about our department that we're so proud of is we have an education side. So we do a lot of consulting, going out to school sites, supporting digital citizenship, building social media guides and augmenting curriculum and opportunities for students to be safe digitally. And then also presentations. And then we have, which I'm going to get into a little bit later in the presentation, I think, the premier student internship program in the country and a pipeline directly from a 10th grade high schooler to actually working in our office. And we're very proud of that work. And I'm so proud of my team that has created that. They do all the work. They're the ones, as they're running this meeting, they're also doing so much when it comes to strategy and being really effective and dynamic for our team. So with that, some quick highlights on that. Over the last few years, we've modernized our Board of Education meetings. We've also built out live stream and remote cameras systems at our curriculum office. And now one is being installed at Browning to allow us to cast a wider net, to have more professional quality video, but also to be able to have, you know, like at OCIPD, you could now be able to do a training meeting. Where Avalon can actually zoom in and be a part of the meeting in real time while people are in person, just like we've done throughout years with you all through different meetings during the pandemic and things like that. I'm proud to give our marketing team a shout out that we constantly have districts reaching out to us and asking us to consult. And how did you do this? How do you do your live streams? How have you built these processes? And a lot of districts that are comparable in size have come to us and said, you're obviously leading this work. And so what do we do to enhance our communications? Our social media is comparable or more active than the top five districts in California and the top five districts in the nation per capita. So even districts like LAUSD, New York, and Miami Dade, I didn't say those in order. If you take their population versus our population and then what our social media engagement is in theirs, we're either at the same pace or better. And they all were doing it about 10 years before we started. And so we've put a huge investment into that. And the social media is not the end-all-be-all. I laugh all the time because people will say, you know, Chris, I know you're the social media guy, but I don't really, I don't really do social media. And I'm like, I'm terrified of social media. I have a kid and I run it for the district. Like, I know all, all about it. But it is a necessary reality as we continue to modernize. And it is a way that people communicate, and it is the town hall. And so we have to invest in that. But it is a supplemental piece of communication. It's not the end-all-be-all of what we do. We have created thousands, thousands of professional videos since 2020 for HR training, school events, district events, curriculum support, department support, parent resources. And it's important because everything we provide the community needs to be of the highest quality and industry standard, including our productions and the content that we put out. It shows that we value our work. I think about when I was a teacher, I had an immaculate classroom that I made look as cool as possible with posters everywhere and engaging content. Because when those kids came in the room, I wanted them to know that I was serious, that I meant business, that I was going to put in the same effort that I expected them. It's the same thing that we do, even in something that someone would think is simple as video production. And then, of course, expanded educational support with our internship program and our resources and things like that. So this next slide is something that I think is unique, is our recurring content. So we have, in a lot of ways, and this goes back several years ago with some conversations with some of our former leaders in education, like Chris Eftehew, who's no longer with us. And Elvia and I talk about this all the time, that we want to tell our story. We are the people to tell our story, right? Because we are in this work. And so we've created quite a bit of recurring content and then just professional, high-quality information that comes out annually. And so these are things that every year we do, we plan for. We look at our data and when it's, and that informs us if we're going to refine things or change things. And so on the right side, you see, we, you know, we now have Board of Education meeting recaps. So your meeting, this meeting and your meeting tonight will be recapped and in a video by next week that goes out to the community in English and Spanish. Our district bulletin, news stories, as Elvia talked about, our annual year in review, talking about the progress of the district, our very important guidelines for students and families, our Vision 2035 work, and district accountability is all kind of one side. Or, and there's, there's more. But those are many of the standard things that we make sure to provide resources to our staff and our families. And the other side, our video content of our podcasts that we're very proud of. We're at about 115 episodes at this point, showcasing so many great things. Many of the people in this room have been on our podcast, so thank you for that. And Gary would like you to come back because he's always looking for new episodes. Our district news and bulletin, our latest news show where we're covering things happening across the district, our celebrations and inclusion holiday posts, really trying to cover everything we can to include everybody that, to be represented in being celebrated in our community. And then, of course, our spotlights, which we're very proud of. It came out of a conversation with Dr. Baker and President Craighead during, I think, some of the darkest time of the pandemic about with everything so bad happening, there were so many great things happening. And how do we continue to tell that story and not let that get drowned out? Not let the success of our students and our staff and our programs get drowned out by the negative. And so that started us making weekly videos highlighting different things happening. And now we've aligned it with Vision 2035. So now when we go out and we're looking for programs to highlight and spotlight for your board meetings, they are really aligned to our core values, our portraits, and what's happening with Vision 2035. So it's a lot of great work, and I'm going to explain a little bit later. But if you look at recommendation six in the audit, all of this content, creative video, utilizing social media, was all part of those recommendations. And we took that very seriously from the day that we started. So, sorry, I know I talk fast, but we got a lot to talk to you about. So I want to, for the second part of the presentation, I want to kind of tell you a story. And so we're very fortunate to be the storytellers of the district. And so we, it's easy for us to tell stories, and I think it's important. And I'm a former English teacher and history teacher, so I love a good quote. So I'm going to start with a quote. Nassim Taleb, who wrote a book called Anti-Fragile, he's an economist, New York Times bestseller. In his book, he says, "Wind extinguishes a candle and energizes fire. Likewise, with randomness, uncertainty, chaos, you want to use them, not hide from them. You want to be the fire and wish for the wind." This quote, to me, emphasized the idea that challenges and uncertainties, they can weaken us or they can strengthen us depending on how we approach them. And just as wind can easily extinguish a candle, like you're blowing on it, it can energize a massive forest fire very, very quickly. And facing randomness, uncertainty, chaos are detrimental if we are too fragile as an organization. But it can make us stronger and more resilient if we're adaptable and robust. And he suggests embracing challenges to grow and improve and become like a fire that thrives in the presence of wind. And that's what we've sought out to do. And I would argue, and I'm not putting anyone down, but like all educational institutions in this country, all public entities, when we faced the pandemic, we were not prepared. No one was prepared. We were not prepared for the political climate that was happening at that time. We weren't prepared for COVID. We weren't prepared for the tragic murder of George Floyd and that outcry that came out of that. We weren't ready from a communication standpoint and an engagement standpoint to really engage our community and figure out where to go next. We were fragile. But I can say, under Dr. Baker's leadership, her team, their investment in us, we faced that randomness, he talks about, that uncertainty and that chaos for the last five school years head-on. And we moved quick to innovate and build new systems. And it's never been perfect. And through this whole presentation, I'm going to continue to say, it's not perfect. It never is. I promise you, I'm way more of a critic of myself than anyone in this room. We go home every day saying we're failing because we have to keep that momentum to always do better and engage our community and face that head-on. And it started really with one of the most unprecedented times in our modern history. And we had to just keep moving. And we've become robust and we're continuing to grow. And now it's really about, yes, being, building systems that are dynamically proactive, but being effective when you have to be reactive. And that is, that's something we don't talk about all the time. We always say, we want to be proactive, not reactive. Sometimes you just have to, right? In this work, I mean, Elvia has been here a short time, and I can tell you how many fires she's put out and things she's had to work on a daily basis because everything is happening in this giant system all the time. And so in that, why we are so committed to being leaders in this work nationwide, it does go all the way to positive student outcomes. Because that's what it's all about, really, at the end of the day, for all of us and what we're doing. You know, I'm a former teacher, never thought I would be sitting here. I thought I'd be in the classroom until I retired. That matters first. And our work is directly aligned to that. And you know, as we were talking through Vision 2035, there's so much about, there's confusion sometimes for our non-teaching staff, like, how does this apply to me? This is, this is the classroom, the graduate portrait, what is that? And we've, I've had a lot of conversations with classified staff. And my, our entire team is classified except for me. I can draw a direct line. Because if we're not providing timely information, we're not supporting school sites, it's affecting families, they're not getting the information they need. That goes down to affecting student success all the way. So what we do matters all the time. And our team has a grasp of that impact. And it connects to all of our core values. But especially, we focus on culture of innovation and creativity. Centering student needs and voice is a huge part of our work. And I hope you see that through some of the examples in this presentation. And then really excellence accountability through continuous improvement is something that we're constantly thinking about. We're always revising and growing and thinking, what can we do better? And so in that, it's such a challenge right now because we are in the hyper-information age. Our families have challenges of access when it comes to language justice, technology, that will, will never fully solve that, we're always trying to. And then the attack on our attention spans. I get complaints about people saying, we didn't know about things. Then I get other people saying, stop telling me so many things. Right? I'm a parent in this district, and there's a day when I'll send out a school messenger for communications, then I'll get two from my kid's school, and I'm annoyed. And I'm one of the people in communications. It's always a challenge, and we're always trying to figure out how to adapt in that. So looking back, so as I said, March 13th, 2020, y'all probably can remember it. I've been thinking about this a lot in the way of, you know, you have those like core events in your life that happen. And then you have those core historical events that happen that you have this like collective narrative of from the people in your life that were there, your generation. And I was thinking about some, like, I was thinking about some that were interesting. Like, I remember being in the first grade in kids' club, watching a little television and watching the Challenger explode. And, and those, that astronaut's tragically dying. I remember baby Jessica falling in the well and being on TV, you know, back before we had internet and cable. 9/11, of course. For me, March 13th, 2020 is one of those days. And I'm sure it is for many of you. I remember exactly where I was. I remember in the, on the fourth floor, what was happening. I can, I could narrate it perfectly. It was a time that shocked our world. And for people who, you know, all shapes, sizes, everything, everybody went through it in their own way. And it was a traumatic time. And, you know, Dr. Baker said it so many times, the safest place for our kids is to be in school. And we couldn't have them in school. That was a challenge. And I think it's easy sometimes, because I get to read all the hate and negativity on social media. People think of leaders as bureaucrats that are just up in a tower somewhere and not realizing that we are all affected. And we were fighting every day to try to figure out how to move forward, how to make sure our kids were supported and educated and get them back in schools. And part of that came down to communications. But like I said, we were fragile. We did not have a communications apparatus. We had a fantastic public information director, dear mentor of mine and friend, who was amazing. We had Darren working on the website. I was the random administrator just starting to focus on social media, and the world fell apart. And it was, what do we do? And we got to work that day. That was when we filmed Jill's first video that went on to be, I think, almost one a week for almost a year, and Dr. Brown's videos and everything else we did. And so in that, we moved quickly. We developed centralized communication strategies. We started our recurring content. We began elevating student voice from the beginning. We modernized and redesigned the entire multimedia department to be something completely different. You know, our OMS has gone through like six iterations, going back to a radio station in the early 1900s. We completely redesigned everything to be up to the 21st century and to no fault of the staff at the time. But we were about, our technology and our approaches when the pandemic hit were about the 1970s. We were not ready. And I will tell you, I've led a lot of different teams and had to transform stuff. And sometimes that's hard for people. But it was so amazing to walk into a team and they all were like, hi, you're the new boss. Can we change everything and modernize and be awesome? And I was like, oh, okay, let's get to work. And they've continued to do that over and over again. Our dynamic social media strategy, our professional live streaming systems that have been copied even by some of our partners locally. Our expansion into language justice is so important. Dr. Meneses and I have had a lot of conversation about this. It's still not enough, and we will continue to say that. But it's standard for us. Our meetings are live streamed in four languages, the prominent languages in our, in our city. Our major publications are put out that way. It's a standard practice. Shout out to Dr. Salazar and her team. When we first started doing that, it was clunky and confusing of like, hey, I need this translated. To now, I have wonderful administrators on speed dial that I can text at a moment's notice and say, I need this translated today. Our amazing translation and interpretation unit get on it and they make that stuff happen. It's not perfect. We're always refining. But it, it became part of our culture in our department. That's a value, a dynamic value of ours, is language justice. In that, also, our new website upgrades, which we'll talk about, and then expanded communication support for departments and school sites and really trying to be not only centralized communication, but also how do we consult support? So as Elvia said, we are all communicators. How do we build capacity for our entire community? And then our internship program. So that's a whole lot from 2020 to 2023. So then, in moving forward, which is, I really kind of titled it and think of as this year, it's really about what's happened this year. And Dr. Brown said it so well. As one of the people who's been here a while and been through all of this, I can't tell you how grateful I am to have Elvia here and how she just was a game changer from the moment she walked in the door. We got to work. We didn't have to even build much of a rapport because we already had the sense of that we were here to serve the community and we were going to do that work together. And it's not about ego, it's about collaboration and building our team and supporting them. And she came in with that leadership from the beginning. So it was like, it's like when you start working with someone, you're like, oh, we've worked together for 10 years. This is just who we are. And so I'm so grateful for you. And, and her reorganization. You know, today, we're so excited to announce that we are now the communications department. No more MMS, no OMS, no PIO, not this fragmented thing, but we are a unified team and we are the communications office. I'm also very proud, as you can see behind you, we have, we are launching the official rebrand of Long Beach Unified for the first time, pretty much in Long Beach's history. We've had three iterations of our logo and some odd ones over time. But we really put in this work for two years. It was research-based. Shout out to Steve Swift, our amazing graphic designer, who built out so many different proofs. And we researched different schools and we did some focus group work. You know, it's a challenge to do. But I'm also proud to say to you as the board who holds us accountable, we did this in-house. If I was a professional consultant, I would have charged you $100,000 to do this. And we did this as part of our job because we didn't need to do that. We had the capacity of staff and the assets to actually start building this out. And so we've launched the digital launch, we're moving things forward. And when we launched the strategic plan, that's really the official launch of the brand. And for a cost-saving measure as well, we are grandfathering a lot of things in. So like, we're not going to rebrand all of the trucks, you know, and everything. But the new, like, electric trucks that just came in, they have the brand-new logo on them. So that'll kind of happen over time so that we're not causing excess cost on the district as well. And then, Enspur. And we'll get into a little bit at the end. And not, awards are not always, you know, the end-all-be-all. How we serve the community is what matters. But in the last three years, we've won 10 Enspur awards from the organization that audited us. And one honorable mention of a podcast with Natter, talking about Vision 2035 that should have won a gold. Still mad about that. But, you know, it's nice to be recognized by the organization that gave us the support. And I spent a lot of time talking to the auditors during the audit, like offhand. And we were, schools were closed. So every conversation was, well, I know you guys want to do this, but you can't, and you can't, and you can't, and you can't. So they were very gracious in that. But what they mapped out for us gave us a lot of just things to think about. And they confirmed what we knew we needed to do. And so it was a nice little roadmap. And just to even see some of the awards we've won are connected directly to the recommendation. So it's neat to see that our work's being recognized and that we're being effective. And so I'm going to pass out the next section to Elvia for, to continue on this section.
Before I continue on the section, I just want to acknowledge you, Chris, because you're just amazing. And I think everybody knows your work speaks for itself. And I also want to acknowledge Chantel Bronchek, who's in the audience, who has just joined our, our team. She's, um, specifically focusing on the work that the facilities department and operations do. And she's amazing. So thank you for being here and for all that you do. Chantel, welcome to LBUSD. Welcome back. You're right. Sorry. Okay. Our action steps to enhance our communications efforts includes, includes several key initiatives. We are continually expanding our communications capabilities by utilizing tools such as Peachjar, social media and web expansion. To provide better support, we are increasing our communication resources for school sites and departments. We are also developing a tool to assist administrators during incidents and crisis. In fact, we've already created this tool and it's, it's, it is already being utilized and it's, um, resulted to be very effective. Ensuring timely communication with families while the primary focus remains ensuring that our school communities are safe during a crisis. So during an incident at a school, we, principals kind of rely on our team because their main job at the school site is to ensure that the school is safe. Additionally, we're in the process of creating a communications handbook, which we aim to complete by the end of August. With everything that we're doing right now to prepare it back to school, it's, it's been kind of on hold, but we, it's, it's in development and it's almost near completion. This handbook will serve as an internal resource for LBUSD leadership and school administrators. Shaping tomorrow. To shape the future arc of our communication efforts, we are focusing on several key areas. First, we are consolidating communications by merging the public information office with marketing and ser- and media services to streamline our operations. Thank you for mentioning all that. Hence the Department of Communications. We're also refining our internal communication processes, aiming to enhance them while building capacity for departments to manage and distribute their own communications effectively. We're also, we're also doing this, um, for our school sites as well. But during a crisis, they rely on us for the, for the most part because they're busy ensuring that the schools, the school site remains safe. Additionally, we are committed to capacity building by supporting and developing the communications department as well as providing resources to school sites and departments.
And so um, and so fourth bullet point on there is about our internship program. And so with the support of Dr. Brown, um, who every time I come to her with a crazy idea, if it's good for kids, she's, says go for it. And, um, Gary, who is, uh, one of our managers or department and, and Ruben, our supervisors really set out to, we had an internship program. We had a few interns over the year, but to really make it something dynamic and expanded. Um, something that provides industry standard work-based learning. We have a professional studio. We have the same cinema equipment that's used in, in professional industry. So our kids get to work with really amazing equipment. Um, what I love about that program is our staff have the kids come in, show them everything and then ask the kids, what do you want to do? What do we need to do for the district? What, what ideas do you have? And we let the kids run wild and it's amazing. I mean, so much of our content that we put together, um, comes from our, our, our kids. Uh, 40% of our content, I think it is, it's maybe in the later slide, um, was some way produced or connected to our student interns in just this last year. We started in the ninth and 10th grade with summer internship program. Um, students who are committed and, and excited can then be senior interns during the school year, especially in 11th and 12th. We actually have a student worker who is an employee, just like our nutrition services has, um, that actually, so it's someone who's really shown over the two years that they're really committed and, and they're really, uh, excited about this. And they become the student worker. And I'll give you an example, um, Izzy Fowler, who was one of our, our interns, senior intern, was our first student worker. Um, she is now going into digital marketing. She graduated this last year. She helped create, um, a majority of our Ensprou award-winning social media guide for the district. So she created this national award-winning document for a billion dollar organization while in high school and has that to put on her resume. And so we made sure, of course, her name is listed on, on, in the publication and everything. So it's, it's, our internship is not just, um, uh, you know, oh, you come in and file some papers. It's you're going to learn how to do this. And if it's something you want to do, we're going to support you in moving forward. And then from there we have our college aides and, um, I'm going to embarrass her, but Shelby, who's one of our first amazing interns is in that room over there. She is back from college, um, and she is our, one of our college aides, uh, just seeing her, and she's, she went to school for film. So even seeing how our team was able to support her into getting into college was phenomenal. And so from that college age position, we have worked directly with the personnel commission so that, um, it's written into the job description for our entry level job, our digital marketing, our digital media specialist. That if you have been an intern for us, that counts as your experience. So you could literally walk out of high school and even while you're going to college, potentially get a job working in our department. And so it's a pipeline. It's part of some of the strategy work in Vision 2035 of, um, recruiting, retaining and, uh, um, supporting diverse staff, but especially from our kids, right? We're the largest employer in the city. We're huge. We have this pool of amazing students that we're educating and we have a lot of jobs. So we are one of the teams really trying to pilot, what is that going to look like? And there's, there's system struggles and how to make that work. And we've been kind of dealing with that where we've had, we've run into some roadblocks and so we've been trying to refine it to give our kids in school this great link learning, work-based learning experience. But also can we build this career pipeline and can we be a model for other departments? Um, so it's exciting, really exciting. Um, we've also developed and been testing, um, some prototyping, some focus group protocols. Um, in direct collaboration and consultation with our research office, um, and really how to lift up student voice, reach out to our community and do it all in an effective way that does not cause harm. And so we've been, uh, we did five focus groups this, uh, school year with, uh, or for the school year and into the summer. And we're expanding next year and then looking, how do we expand that work to working with Dr. Salazar's office with the community, um, and with our families? And then, uh, something that is exciting but scary, uh, we are working directly with, uh, with Jack's office and then with school safety on developing a social media think take around social media safety. Uh, social media is out of control. Um, and it's something that no one has an answer for right now. When the pandemic started, I would get a call from a school site and they would say, you know, there's a really horrible account making fun of kids at our school. Can you please get it taken down? I had a system of reporting through Instagram meta and the different programs that would get it taken down in 24 hours. Now I get a message two weeks later from the algorithm that says, sorry, this does not violate our community guidelines and it'll be something that completely does. So the social media companies have just decided they don't care anymore and the government is not holding them accountable. Um, I know there's some work in Congress right now about some safety acts, but that hasn't happened yet. And so we're, our principals, our teachers, our students, our families are dealing with all of this horrific social media out there. And there's no answer right now. And then on top of it, beyond just the dangers of social media, it's stealing our attention and it's horrific. There's a lot of work, um, at MIT and, and a, a lot of researchers talking about how much it's affecting our brains, making us read differently. Um, our attention span is getting worse and worse. When I started this work, the average watch time for a video was 48 seconds and now it's about 14 seconds. And that's for adults as well. So there's a lot negatively happening with social media and there's nobody leading that work. And so being Long Beach Unified, we need to help lead that work. And so where do we fall into that? And so again, went to Dr. Brown with a crazy idea and said, can we do this? And she said, here's all the people you need to talk to. And we got to work. And so we're building a think tank of, um, those departments, also our principals who are on the ground, some of them especially that work with social media. Some of our community members and kind of coming together, maybe doing some book studies and really kind of co-creating, constructing a team that's really going to kind of tackle this head on and really how do we do all that? So there's some really exciting work that's coming out of the future. Um, so with that, that's kind of shaping those three areas from the past to where we were this year, to where we're going. Um, the next few slides are really just some artifacts, some evidence, a little bit of data to share with you. And so Elvia is going to kick off that first part.
And, and I'll just interject to say, we have about 20 more minutes to spend on this presentation. So hopefully you're right on track.
Yes.
We're going to try to race, race on through. We're very proud of our, the, we're, we're very proud of our new website. L A U S D dot net, W W W dot L A U S D dot net. Our website is crucial, is a crucial information hub for families, students, employees, community members, reporters and the public. Following the audit, we implemented a full redesign of the LBUSD website and school websites during the 22, 23 school year. We chose final site for its accessibility, compliance, aesthetics, functionality, customer support and language translation capabilities in Spanish and Kimer, which we're very proud of. The main page features a language icon allowing users to select English, Spanish or Kimer. I'm mispronouncing. Kamai, sorry. I knew I was, sorry about that. The new LBUSD website and school websites offer a clean, user-friendly experience. We can quickly share news stories or urgent messages as pop-up notifications. The new design allows integration between the district and school sites to facilitate mass communications. The district's main page includes the hero gallery for news updates, Y LBUSD flip cards highlighting district facts and awards, the commitment to excellence and equity section and spotlight on social for the latest social media posts. The website features a news section to share good news about our students and staff, quick link icons and easy navigation, including our popular A through Z index and search features. An integrated web calendar connects directly to our district Google events calendar, which makes it easy for staff. The upper right corner of each school site's homepage contains a direct link to the district site and a list of all our other school sites. We crafted a dynamic social media strategy through communication, to, through continuous data analysis and brand experimentation, achieving remarkable success. LBUSD now rivals the top five school districts statewide and nationwide in social media engagement, as Chris has mentioned. The communications team has produced over 1,500 videos since 2019, maximizing video use for centralized communications, inclusive celebrations, informative content and student-generated material. So this is a way of how we really focus on using students to help us tell our story. Cause let's be honest, people don't like looking at adults sometimes. They want to look at students and they want to learn from students. And we're, as you mentioned, did you want to add something? Oh, um, we're very proud to announce that this year we received an Ensprou award for our website. So I just wanted to mention that again.
And it's so exciting and because that was 6.1 was a recommendation of upgrading our website and using creative video, integrating social media. We did all of that and we won an award for it, which is really cool. Shout out to Darren, uh, who's not here. It also, the action step 1.1 in the audit talked about the four-step PR process, which is a basic planning tool for PR. We do utilize that already, but we utilize a lot more. We utilize the PDSA cycle, plan, do, study, act, which is something our district has used for a long time. And we also now have delved deeply into liberatory design thinking around how we plan items. And so I bring that up because when this next page, when we look at our website, we're constantly looking at data and responding to the data. Um, analyzing it, thinking about how we can improve. And so this is just some analytics breakdown from this year for our new website. Anyone can critique our website. I've looked at a billion websites because I was part of the team that put this together and there, there is no perfect website. It's always a challenge. We're always having to figure out what are new tools and resources to engage your community, to make it easier, to make it user-friendly, because it's always a challenge. Um, and so I wanted to give you an example. If you look at the arrows there, there's two pages, our career opportunities page and our enrollment page that are on that, the graphic up there. And you can see the sessions and users. So sessions is how many times people clicked on it, how many of the users. Those numbers are good statistically. If you think of people looking for a job or just like TK and kindergarteners possibly come into our district. But those numbers are low, which means when you look at a lot of our other numbers and what pages are being visited, those are two of the most important pages on our website. We need people to work here and we need kids to come to our schools. And so those, if we're going to have a website, we need to utilize that and make those pages effective and communicate that. So just as an example, uh, we soft-launched the website in, during spring break of last year. Within a month, we were already working with Darren to redesign the career page in collaboration with HR, with ELTD, with Equity Leadership Talent Development. Um, and we were proud of what we did, but then as we've looked at the numbers this summer, we're like, it's not good enough. It's not engaging. So now we've done a full redesign. Our marketing specialists that are running this meeting sat and analyzed that page and went through it and then mocked up new drafts. And are now working with Darren to rebuild that to make it something that's interesting, that draws people in so that people will want to work for Long Beach. And we're also now doing that with our enrollment page as well. So just an example of how we're always responding to the data, but also this work has been effective and, and, and we've met what the recommendation has said. So then with social media, real quick, I know we're running out of time here. We just had so much. So there's some data and like, the whole point of this presentation that you received early is it's got a lot in it. It's a lot for you to chew on after the fact as well. And if things come up down the road, we're always come back. We just wanted to provide you with an extensive amount of information and it's been five years. So we got a lot to say. Um, when I look at social media, um, we just kind of put some stuff together from this year. So I just want to put in context. When I started working in social media in Long Beach Unified in 2019, our Instagram following base was 19 followers. We now average between 35 to 45,000. Um, it, it, we were way behind the eight ball in social media as a district during that time. And so a lot of work was put into that. Um, to give you some examples, our, uh, when we look at our social media strategy, we don't care about engagement. It's not really what it's about. I mean, we do answer questions and we, we point people in the right direction, but it's about views. We want the most amount of eyes on our content that drives to the website or wherever families need to go. We're a, that's a supplemental strategy or supplemental communication strategy. But to give you some numbers, our impressions this year across all of our platforms that are spreading information was 5.8 million. Um, and in looking, drilling down to the data, our potential audience for Long Beach Lakewood Signal Hills, about 450,000 to 685,000 people. And we reached 5.8 million users in these targeted areas over the course of a single school year. So people are going back and forth to our social media and I, I heard it said in one presentation, um, and I've heard it many times with kids that our kids don't follow our social media in Long Beach Unified. And that's very true. Uh, I did a focus group recently and I asked the kids, how many of you know about our, our social media? And like three hands came up. I said, how many follow it? And one hand went up. I said, why do you follow it? She said, oh, my mom made me when I started high school. But our view counts and our impressions show that our kids are looking at it when it's something they care about. When it's something that matters. When we have that teacher of the year from Poly who is dynamic, boom, our, our Zoom count blows up. When we make our graduation sizzle video at the end of the year that hits every single school and is as inclusive as possible, it blows up and they're looking at it. So just because they're not following it, doesn't mean they're not connecting with it. And that's important when you're looking at data. One, you know, you, data can tell you one story or it can tell you another story. You need to really kind of sift through that. So we're always thinking methodically with that. Um, and then like I said, I'm proud to, to announce that our deliverables this year had 41% student involvement. So it's all about that. And that goes back to the audit of uplifting student voice and is a core tenet of our department. We had 1.94 million views across all of our platforms, uh, this year. And that in the last six months shows a 415% increase since 2020, 2021, which was the first year that we started really engaging in that. Um, our view growth has grown 26% um, compared to last year and our average post value, this is neat, is plus 10. That's the average number of views compared to 22, 23. And I, what I want to explain to you is this is, we make so much content and you know, it's a complaint often in the world that there's too much information. And my wonderful staff came to me and said, we have two, we're doing too much content. It's not effective. It's not going to work because we deal with algorithms and all the ways that social media gets distributed. So we jumped plus 10 this year, but we did 2,000 less pieces of content. We do about 5,000 pieces of content a year. And so we cut like dramatically. And it allowed more of the information we were putting out to get out to the community. So again, it's another looking at data always and really responding to that. And then since we're getting close, the last one, I'll go fast because I've already talked about it, but talked about it. But, um, when we look at, um, uplifting student voice, there's many ways we do it, but through our internship program. And these are just the numbers you can look at on your own, but about how it's grown over time. And then what we're looking at for, uh, this school year, pro-school year. This goes to increasing student voice, which was a recommendation. And again, I'm going to reiterate it, our, we listen to our interns constantly. They tell us what to do when it comes to what we need to communicate and, and what works. Like that's a core tenet of who we are and it always will be. And we're always looking to expand that. And the coolest thing is we have interns who then are like, oh, my friends have some ideas or could be on the podcast and they'll come in. So we'll have other students just involved constantly. Um, if you've noticed, if you do follow our podcast, you're probably happy because you don't have to see my face anymore. You see our kids always on the podcast because they're the ones that host it. And they've gone from not only hosting it, but many of the episodes, they're doing concept production, development, editing. They're, they're running all of it and Gary's just supervising that process. Um, that also goes into recommendation, uh, all the recommendations in, in six, because that's all about creative use of video and social media as well. And then, um, we're continuing to find new ways, new ways to do this and engage and make it part of our system as we go along. So the next page really shows our, our awards that you can kind of walk through, um, when you get a chance. But just of what, kind of how we've grown really in responding to Ensprou over the last several years. And from here, because we're short on time, um, and I'm going to defer to Elvia and all of you, uh, the next set of slides are, we kind of went really surgical on every action step of the recommendate, 10 recommendations and all the different points. We pulled out everyone that we felt like, uh, we accomplished something or were ongoing and we gave kind of some anecdotal explanations and summaries. It's a lot to walk through. So based on time, I don't know where you want to go from here. We just wanted you to have that information. And a lot of it, we've already talked about in the presentation, but we wanted just to make sure we were very clear about everything that we had worked on.
So we have, thank you, thank you. So we have 10 minutes. Um, I can maybe start by going over the main recommendations if you like. Or we can kind of pause right here and then just see if there's any, uh, questions.
Maybe a pause to see if there are any questions. I, I know it's a lot, um, it was laid out very nicely, very clearly. Um, colleagues, do we have any questions at this point or? Oh, yes.
So in, in the spirit of, uh, part of the conversation at our last board workshop, President Craig had was maximizing time at our meetings. I do feel that it's hard, um, and, and I was, and I've tried to show restraint here, right? Cause he said, hold your questions to the end. To have a 40-minute or so presentation and then to be left with potentially eight or nine minutes. and then to be left with potentially eight or nine minutes of discussion. So is there any flexibility in our agenda, President Craighead? Because it comes back down to me, we haven't heard an update as comprehensive as this. And I don't want to minimize or trivialize all the effort and work that went into this and not be able to have a more robust conversation. As all of my colleagues here know, I'm guilty. I'm the one that keeps on asking about what happened to the audit? When are we getting an update on the audit? And I feel it really tough that we have then, you know, an additional ten slides or so and won't be able to kind of get it into the weeds. So, Madam Chair, I defer to you. But is there some flexibility on our time so that then I can be strategic and reflections, thoughts, questions?
As long as we're willing to give up some break time or something else, yeah. Yeah, let's look. I mean, you're absolutely right. We haven't had an update in a while and there's so much information to go over. So I think we can give ourselves a little bit of wiggle room.
Okay.
But just be mindful that we have a packed agenda right up until lunch. So keeping that in mind, yeah, I think that's okay.
Okay. Thank you for that. And again, I want to be respectful because last time we weren't able, you know, you were looking at me and I was like, I'm guilty, right? I'm the one that's extending this. But in all fairness to the work and effort that went into this, I think this deserves more time. So here's my, here's where I'm coming from. I love the way you sort of framed the quote. Thank you, Ms. Gonnell and Mr. Itzen. Stronger, more resilient and robust, right? In the midst of potentially chaos, right, in some cases. So this is in the spirit of our work as a board, and we've reaffirmed this multiple times in the last couple of years, is to uphold and represent communities' vision for student success. All right. So congratulations on all the work. Thank you for the explicit alignment with the student outcomes focus that we've been trying to uphold here as a board. So my thoughts are really at three levels. One is at the sort of the district-wide, what I would say, level. But to be more specific, like our board meetings, right, from a district-wide lens. A second level at the school site, right? Time and time again, Dr. Baker and the senior team have said, first line of entry, first line of communication, last line of defense is the school site, right? Rarely, if ever, do we want folks to end up as a first point of entry at central office or with one of us, right? The ideal here is let's engage at the neighborhood, school site, community level. So there, those are two. But what I hear implicitly, I'm not sure if I heard it explicitly, but I'm deducing from the presentation and really the way you're presenting it is a huge culture shift that's been not only required and needed to move forward on this work, but for us to be successful. All right? We can build systems, procedures, protocols, practices. But if we don't deploy them around our values, then they're either not maximized or misguided in terms of what we want to do with all the intentionality behind the work. So I want to go back to the core value of not the audit, but one of the things that was highlighted in the audit that you've already pointed to. COVID magnified those structural level deficits, issues, problems that may have already been there and in some cases were explicitly there. But then that our kids and families ended up paying the price for, right? We just structurally weren't able to deploy, and that wasn't an LBUSD problem, that was an international problem. So I want to come from the spirit of the intersection of community engagement for me and communications is an anchor for this work. So lovely to hear that we have a new communications office. But earlier in the last year, so I don't remember when, Dr. Baker, we announced a community engagement sort of office and team. And so to me, although there are separate things and separate approaches and separate consideration, there's a very important intersection for me around communications and community engagement. And you've already referenced it, alluded to it. So could we speak a little bit about how these huge structural efforts? This is a huge lift, right? And I know that you're all backed by wonderful teams, but it's insufficient for the monolith of a system that we have here. So again, kudos to both of you and your ongoing work with the teams. But we're really talking about structural, cultural, and then building out things that haven't been there. And so I want to really hone in on, because you've covered a lot here, the intersection between communications and community engagement. Because if our job is to uphold and represent communities' vision, it doesn't matter what we do on our end if we're not reflecting that, whether it's through users, impressions, two-way communication. So here's where I would like a little bit more clarity and not in terms of an answer, but sort of where we're going with this information. We have, it went from understanding capacity now to share information, disseminate information in multiple languages, both internally and with our community stakeholders. I'm wondering where we are in terms of capacity and intentionality of how we're going to use and deploy this work in these systems on the two-way communication, us being active listeners to our parents, caregivers, community partners, us being responsive to the gifts and talents and the knowledge in our communities. You mean, you referenced the four languages in addition to the, you know, all the other languages that we have in our beautiful community. Because oftentimes what I hear from our team, and it's a big kudos, right, fancy problem to have, that we are awesome. You said it, Mr. Itzen, best. We're sending now thousands of communications, all right? Where are we with us being active allies and partners and listeners on the engagement piece of this? Because as you said, you know, thirty-four thousand is good on stuff, but it can and should be higher. We hear about systems and platforms from our community engagement team like Thought Exchange, right? How many folks show up and participate in LCAP and budget engagement work? And Mr. Otto almost always points to a couple of years ago when we did some community visioning and listening sessions, props to those folks that showed up, but clearly we didn't engage as many folks as we could have. So big picture question. Given all the effort and work and success that we've had, not just in response to the audit, but to a pillar that's weaved into everything that we do, right? Parent engagement, student voice, community engagement. How do we see the intersection between the engagement, which requires two-way communication? Two-way communication, which requires authenticity. And it's not just about teaching parents how to navigate our platforms and inviting folks to our stuff. It's us being actively present in the community and leveraging our resources, assets, gifts and talents of our intern around the acknowledgement that community has talents, knowledge, gifts. I'm sure that much of this work, Mr. Itzen, is informed by and guided by our community partners, right, our students. You referenced it. So I'm long-winded there, but to me, ultimately, that's a pillar that I want to hear more about. And there's a lot of pressure on you because we haven't heard and I have been asking and I promise, you know, Dr. Baker, give us some time, Dr. Itzen, we're working on stuff. But here we are and I don't want to lose the opportunity of, that to me is where the pillar that then holds the foundation for our Vision 2035 work is because without authentic, genuine, robust community engagement, our communications, I think, fall short of the promise for them. So that's my sort of broad level thinking.
I'm just going to start us off. Dr. Benitez and some conversation around what you're raising. By highlighting the idea that communications and engagement do not live inside of any one office. They have to live everywhere. And so our best work is the work that's moving forward through Vision 2035 right now and the way that we hold an expectation for engagement in all of our schools, to all of our communities. So five years ago, engagement was a good idea. Right now, it's an absolute necessity in all we do. And the same is true for communication. So I want to take the big idea that you've raised and bring us to a more granular level. If we are talking about the work of communications and engagement inside of any one office, we will always fall short. But what we have learned and brought forward is a set of practices and a knowing of community expectations and need to engage with community that's very different than it was. And so that's a part of what the team has worked to highlight today. So I'll kind of alley-oop that to you for anything that you want to add or anybody else wants to add to what we're talking about with this big idea that you've raised.
Just one comment away that I have thought about this too is similar to bodies of expertise that live like really deeply in a division that partner with another office. First of all, both of, all of communications falls under Dr. Brown's purview. So it is a bringing together of directors of communication and communication staff and equity engagement and partnerships. Those deep bodies of expertise, so in the Equity Engagement and Partnerships Office, studying and creating the framework of which to operate for community engagement is their deepening of expertise. The role of communications is to amplify and to make access possible for all of the ways that that framework is now being established across the district. Most importantly, through the lens of schools. And so setting the standards of excellence, guiding schools in what it looks like to professionalize language access, language justice, but really in the role of amplifying and enabling a community engagement framework to not just live in print or live in theory, but then to take that deep expertise and to their partners that absolutely allow that to take place in all of the ways that you've heard that require technology and a whole different thinking about language and how it's presented in the community, the listening aspect. And so I see it as two parts of a very important equation that allow deepening of expertise to come together in a strategic way rather than a person, you know, that can kind of facilitate the vision of it, but not really so much of the deep expertise. So that's not a complete answer either. And I definitely want to have Chris and Elvia and anybody else that wants to talk about it, but just at a high level, represent the thinking of these two partners in the work.
Just kind of want to add it, add to what you said, Dr. Benitez. Effective communication and engagement is the responsibility of not just the departments that do this work, that facilitate this work, that lead this work, but it's a, it's a understanding of a mindset, the undertaking, changing the culture right now that we, you know, we are, that everyone in the system, everyone in the district believes in customer service, that we believe in what we do, that we believe in uplifting the voice of community, that we believe in communicating to families and to, and to students and to administrators in a way that they understand this information. So that's something that we work together right now and that's something that we're going to continue to do to improve and be more efficient as a district.
And to piggyback, I think, sorry to be said, but it's everyone's job. It's obviously a collective effort. And we have to continue to build capacity from, you know, I feel proud in having a robust, strong centralized communication system. But like I said in the very beginning, that's not enough. Like, it's never enough. We're always figuring out what to do next. I love it. We were talking about this yesterday. I love it when I call my daughter's school and somebody answers the phone. It is the greatest feeling, like, man, customer service, they're there. Like, I can get the answer. And I'll tell you, even as an educator, I'm confused all the time as a parent when it comes to how school works on that side. It's like a whole different world. I don't know if that's always happening at every single school, right? How are we ensuring that that's happening, that that capacity has been built in all areas of our community? And I think in the same way where we had to, and Dr. Benitez, you kind of kicked this off from two thousand and twenty, we had to kind of reimagine what communications was. I think we're reimagining community engagement and I think our district is pioneering in that. And I can point to all kinds of ways where we're still missing the mark, but where it's continuing to grow. And I think about just in the same way of Vision 2035, this radical new way of thinking of where we're supporting our kids and building up these core values. You know, as one of the people on the team, socializing the vision, it's such a challenge because it's like, this is going to take a long time to really infuse and embed into the culture. And I think our leadership has been committed to community engagement. And I think about, it's been so much about learning, like, we don't know what we don't know, but we can learn because that's what education is. And so we're always prototype and experimenting. What do we do next? What's going to work? What's not good enough? And I think, I think all the way back to in the middle of the pandemic, we were getting heavily criticized for our communications. And being the person sitting in that room, I took it very personal all the time because it's our team's work. And it wasn't personally directed at us, but it still felt personal. It was your work. I had a moment where, multiple times where I sat down with community, some of our most vocal community members and said, what do we need to do better? And I let them just chew me out and just tell me where we were wrong. And then I said, okay, well, what do you do? And we started working on ideas and it led to some improvements in what we've done. And then I think partnering alongside Dr. Salazar in her office, when, you know, she took over and redesigned an office and it took a couple of years really to build the structure she's building. And now she's working through the community engagement framework. And you think of the Family Learning Institute, some of the things that happened this year. I mean, she's building momentum and we've come alongside that work and partnered with her to even now, we have a committed associate producer who works directly in her office at least three days a week. And we just met with Norma Spencer to start supporting the new work around BSAI. And so I feel like there's momentum. And in the past, I felt like we were trying to learn, what do we do? And experimenting and now we're finally, you know, I think about it when I taught the same class for three years. By year three, it's like, man, I know this content. I feel strong in this. But we had to kind of work through the fear and discomfort of that. And I think, I mentioned in, the term bothers me, but I said focus group work. It sounds so nominal. We're working directly with the research office to standardize processes to do really dynamic listening sessions and empathy interviews and focus groups that can then eventually be scaled out as part of our culture and our practice to listen to our community. And it's always a challenge, but I think we're moving in that direction. I'm proud of that work, but we have a long way to go.
Thank you for that. And I appreciate hearing the framing that Dr. Brown and Dr. Baker provided. By no means, I think I said that, but I want to reiterate it. I don't want to discount or discredit all the work here, right? I'm talking more about how do we continue to orient the work and we have products, right? We have platforms that we didn't have. We have systems that we didn't have. How do we orient it around our, I'm looking at you, Dr. Salazar, our community engagement framing, not like a nuts and bolts, because I said, you know, we have ten pages here of granular accomplishment. Not trying to minimize those either. So if I asked a question and I asked it, I want to say in my third month and six years ago, do we have capacity? And I'm not, this is not an action item, colleagues, don't worry here. But it's a question that has come up, not just for me. It's come up oftentimes. Do we have capacity right now that if we wanted to consider, Dr. Baker, no pressure, rotating a school board meeting in our respective districts and engaging in different ways with communities? Because, you know, quite frankly, we don't have a lot of ongoing participation. We do when there's something going on. I knew that a few years ago, that was a much more difficult question to be able to answer. So when I talk, when I talk about when we come from engaging as a board with our communities, whether it's in town halls, whether it's in visioning sessions, whether it's as individual board members, fancy problem, right? I'm coming at it as a parent too, Mr. Itzen. Sometimes I'll get ten communications in one day and that's awesome, right? The fact that then I have to navigate, okay, how do I prioritize what I'm getting from the school, from the district, text, email? Love it, right? Fancy problem because now we have capacity to share and deploy information. All I'm asking is how do we use that, leverage that so that the board can also achieve our roles and responsibilities to engage with communities that during COVID, it was almost impossible to do. Pre-COVID, we were having that conversations around how do we do this stuff? Where are we at with those kinds of conversations?
So I'm going to answer part of it and then I'm going to defer to Dr. Brown and Dr. Baker. I remember when you said that the first time in a board meeting. And from there, as my team always does, anything is said, they just get to work on figuring out and how to solve problems. And so we have the technical capabilities, absolutely, as long as we have plug-in internet to livestream public meetings anywhere in the city. If you remember, we did some work with Dr. Salazar's office around the Local Control Accountability Plan, where we had a meeting at Browning that was in-person with breakout groups, also livestream, also on Zoom with breakout groups. So there was full integration of that. We now have multiple way Browning and OCAPD in here that we have the installed hardware and capability. installed hardware and capabilities. And then we also have mobile units. The other part of that, the, the logistics from the district side, I wouldn't be able to answer, but, but from a technical side, it's, we have probably one of the most advanced systems that exist.
Okay, Mr. Miller.
I'm going to try and be really, really brief here, but I had a couple of questions really centered around not necessarily your explanation of communications, but the tools that we are going to continue to use, knowing that the communication space is, right? So first off, I just wanted to give you all big kudos from the beginning, from explaining, you know, often, and I'm, I'm going to tease us a little bit here. Often we talk about the what in this meeting, like, like what's occurring in the district and why, and how it's being effective, but we often don't speak to the why, the philosophical understanding of this is why we're doing this thing this way to accomplish this goal. And I really appreciated the clear description of why the communications department has taken certain approaches to, and then you went into the what is being done. So I really, really wanted to applaud you for that kind of, let's call it preface statement, right? Going into it. But all things considered, as we, as you talked about communications, you talked about the evolution of, let's call it human beings and how we absorb information. Obviously we're attaching ourselves closer to a social media style way of absorbing information. So we're talking about short, direct opportunities to learn something about a student or about a program or about a campus, so on and so forth. And so obviously the direct connection to that is social media. And so when we talked about social media, there's, it's kind of two parts for me and I'll be honest with you. There's my, my dad hat, right? Where I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge my own personal fears about social media. You brought up the insecurities that come with social media are inabilities at times to tame some of the bullying that occurs, some of the negativity that can be found on social media, so on and so forth. I know we have a, a great advocate and assembly member, Josh Lowenthal, who's doing some work on a statewide level to approach some of those deals. But when you, when I think about using social media as a tool to continue to communicate, I mean, it's almost the most obvious tool that we'd be using. And I think that when you talked about the numbers and the evolution of our social media impact, I just wanted to thank you on that. But there's two pieces to this, right? We talked a little bit about the safety piece. What I was curious about when we were developing this communications training manual or the, the handbook, obviously there's going to be a large portion of that that deals with our social media output. But I, I was curious about, one, how will we talk about safety measures, not just as a district, because obviously we know that we're going to be putting out good content, but how do we protect our students from folks being able to say negative things on our pages, to say negative things about, like, I, I guess I'm curious about how do we do social media policing? I guess that's the undertone of my question. Along with that, I also want to ask the question about how do we continue to evolve not the district-wide social media, but I think there's a personal social media attachment that can also grow. When I think about our district and two groups that have used social media very well to not only promote their campus, but their platform, one group that I think about is right away, and I brought up two years ago, was YBS at Wilson and Jonathan. Jonathan Evans was doing a fantastic job with the social, social media platform. And two years ago, I came to a board meeting, I was like, guys, I don't know if you guys are checking this, this group out, but they're doing a fantastic job. And so he's one group. Another person who I think just does a very good job at their platform is the principal at Cabrillo. She is very good at not only using it as a tool to uplift her students, which I think this has built a very quick relationship with the kids, but she also uses it as a communication tool. And so when I think about groups like that, who have used that tool, what I would say probably a little bit better than others, it makes me wonder, how do we duplicate that for other campuses? Because if we can just be transparent here, there are just some people who just have a natural eye for knowing how to use those tools and are good at it. They have a, please don't find any offense to this, to any of our older principals, but there's some folks that are just have a more youthful approach towards it. And then there's some that aren't necessarily as connected to social media and don't use it as, in the same way. And so how do we use this social media tool for, how do we duplicate the skillsets of those folks in other departments? I was hoping that this training manual could do some of that, but I'd be curious if that is something that has been considered in this communications process. So like I said, it's a two-part, one of how we talk about safety and let's call it social media policing. And then also the second piece is going to be about social media duplication in regards to some folks in our system who do it really well.
As the person who stares into the abyss for the district, it's just the amount of hate I've read in the last five years, I can't even count it. We are really restricted based on First Amendment rights. So when people want to say terrible comments on our page, we can't delete that. There is a little bit of leeway and debate and case law around hate speech, but even that is really tricky. We can't block people. It's not a law, but our former president was sued by the ACLU. And so there's case law that basically public entities cannot block anybody because it's freedom of speech. So it's a challenge. We do have some mitigation. So for example, if a post is of our kids and negative comments on there, I'll turn the comments off for that post. I don't like to turn the comments off because we need to be transparent and open and be open to allowing free speech, but at the same time, not going to let someone attack one of our kids. And that's something legally that we can do. So there are times, it's something we keep an eye on all the time. We also, when school sites get attacked or, or programs get attacked, we like, just in the same way, all crisis communication, we are right there working with them the whole time and supporting them in how to work with that. So is that answer that part? And then in the second part, you're right. And we do have some really high flyers, especially our, our major high schools have great social media accounts. Like, I mean, shout out to Wilson, shout out to Polly, but all of them are active. Jordan, what Principal Winn is doing at Cabrillo, you know, she, she's been doing that work back since she was at Rogers. Like she's, you know, a high flyer in that work. And they're doing great. I think the first thing that, like we've done is we've developed a social media guide for staff and one for students and families that are very comprehensive and interactive. One of them won an Esper award. We are getting ready to revise again and push out more materials on that. And the social media guides, like, like for example, for staff, it, it talks a lot about safety. There's board policy issues in there, appropriate behavior, connection to our ethics and equity, equity and ethics policy, and like resources for rules, but it also has stuff on how to maximize and utilize these platforms to, to use them properly. And you're right, because even all of our focus group testing with students, they've all said, we, I'm going to listen to the social media from my school. And so even in some little ways, we've leveraged that where like if it's an Instagram post about a specific program at a high school that has a robust social media, we'll collaborate with them. Jonathan and I for YBS have collaborated where we've covered an event and then I tag them so that they post as well and just amplifies the work. So we're always exploring how to do that. It really just comes down to more resources, more training as we go along, but we do recognize who the high flyers are and try to emulate them and utilize their, them to reach people when we don't think we can. So it's, I don't know if that fully answers it, but.
Yeah. And I guess just following that, has there been consideration on doing like a social media training for some of our higher level leadership in the district? Because once again, I just look at this as a, just a great tool. I don't know if there's been conversations, but I just think that that's something that should be strongly considered.
Definitely something that's possible.
This is what we mean by building capacity. This is one of the things we're going to start to do. Every time we have a conversation about maybe a crisis at a school campus, I will bring it up. And if the, it's too much for the principal to take on, then we'll encourage principals to maybe assign someone on staff to kind of be, have a more active presence on social media. Cause it's important for schools to also tell their own stories, not depend on the district, you know, to tell their stories on social media. So it's, like I said, and how we, you know, we've all kind of mentioned it, it's everyone's job to communicate, to tell our story. And we can't be effective unless everyone participates in this endeavor.
You know, I'm going to interject, just because we've gone so far over and we haven't gotten, we really haven't even gotten to what, you know, what we're doing going forward. And so I'm going to ask our superintendent to have a part two in a future workshop so that we can dedicate more time because there, there's a lot more information we need to go over. And so would that be possible?
Thank you. And I'll also offer the opportunity for any of you that wants to sit with this team and have a more in-depth conversation, both sharing your thoughts, especially your experience in your communities, your, your district areas that you want to bring to this team. That is a wonderful opportunity to hear relative to your specific communities, to provide inputs and then to get lots of questions answered or to feel like you get to ask everything that you want to ask. So I'll just encourage you even before a workshop comes to follow up through me. Happy to help arrange a briefing or two, two of you to sit at a time with the team to really go in depth and to plan for more regular updates through my board update and/or through workshop content. So thank you, team, for those who are in the room, behind the scenes represented for just fabulous work that is very quickly represented in an hour and 20 minutes this morning. Doesn't do justice to all that you've done, but thank you for your representation. It was so much good for Long Beach Unified School District.
And congratulations on the Esper awards and accolades. Yes.
Yes. And I'd just like to take this opportunity to say that like you, Chris, I have felt a shift with having Elvia come on. It, it seems like things are completely different in a, in a really great way. And so I want to thank you for that. I know that more than once you've come to my rescue on things. And so thank you. Chris, I, I want to tell you that your experience as a teacher and working with students has, has clearly shaped the work that you do and you bring a really unique perspective and I appreciate that. And I, I just want to mention that, well, when you were speaking about Chris Eftehu, you mentioned he's no longer with us. I just want to clarify, he's retired.
Thank you. I thought about that as I said it.
Yeah, I made a note of that real quick. But we're going to take a five minute, maybe three minutes. Try, let's shoot for three minutes. I know it'll be five, but, but we're going to take a quick break because we have another presentation that we want to dive into. But thank you so much. And I look forward to the second part because we have so much more to go over. But thank you. And we will reconvene at 10 o'clock. Thank you. Welcome back, everybody. We have a packed agenda. We have so much to talk about. So we will dive right into our next presentation. Mr. Moskowitz, I think you're going to kick it off.
Yes, thank you, President Craighead. So we're excited. As we talked about at our last board workshop, we're excited to this evening bring forward to you the student outcomes governance progress monitoring calendar that hopefully will be approved this evening. And that sets out for the year, our plans for bringing the student data, voices from the field to you, particularly connected to your board goals. So we'll, we can have that conversation tonight if need be. But part of that, as you, as you saw on the calendar, is today is an opportunity for us to share some summative data from the last school year. Some of the components that we'll share are directly connected to your board goals, board goals one and two in particular. But we also know that the board goals were intentionally narrow in scope and that there's a lot more data that we have in our district. So this is an opportunity a couple of times a year for us to look at a broader view of data. And as I hand it off to our research team, that's what they'll be doing, both connecting to your board goals and connecting to some of the broader district goals that we had last year. So with that, it's my pleasure as always to hand off to our great research team, Dr. Madrigal and Ms. Leilani.
Good morning. Thank you for having us today. We are excited to share summative data. And I do want to start out by acknowledging our research team. Some members are here today with us. I have, I have Hamina Leilani next to me as well as Dr. Jody Fender and Dara Huwitt. And also a couple of folks upstairs that couldn't be with us, but they are behind the scenes, such as Matt Reithart, who does a lot of our data extract. And so I wanted to acknowledge them because this work couldn't happen without the wonderful team that we do have on the fourth floor. And with that being said, we do want to get started on our student outcomes data. Today, we are actually going to break up our presentation into two sections. One being we're going to provide an, an update on the progress monitoring on board goal one and two. As you recall, in June, we provided an update on board goal and board goal one and two, and we want to wrap that up today. The second portion of our presentation will entail summative data such as SBAK ELA and math, as well as core and poll survey data. So as we transition into looking at how we're progress monitoring data, I want to just call out something that we have been trying out that we've all in this room have engaged in, which is prototyping a different way of progress monitoring our student outcomes data. And so let's, let's recall a little, let's go back in time a bit. In June, we had our, our update on board goal one and two in this format, which is our traditional way of sharing data. We shared slides, sometimes we bring in folks to talk about data. And we provided an update as I shared on board goal one and two specifically I Ready. And then in July, we engaged the board in a deeper dive in data in our July 17th closed session meeting where we were able to partner up and have some really rich discussion around data that supports not only board goals, but also broader data for our broader district goals. So something different, and we're going to continue to do this throughout the year because it's important to talk about data, engage, not just the research team, but all of us. And I was able to hear the presentation given by Elvia and Chris, and they really talked about, it involves everyone and the apply, everything that was said earlier and it applies in this as we talk about data. What you won't cover, what we won't cover today, and it's important to note that because you might have a wondering, wait, hold on, we need to look at board goal three and four. We won't provide that data today, but we will in September. So that will be an update. And that update will include A through G data, as well as algebra proficiency. In addition, our summative data, which will include college and career indicators. So important to note that before we get started in our data presentation. And to ground us in what we're covering today, we are covering board goal one, reading proficiency, which states that the percentage of grade three students who meet or exceed grade level standards on the state English Language Arts SBAK assessment will grow from 48% in June 2023 to 70% by June 2028. And so our leading indicators that we're looking at today are actually FERSA and SBAK. And what you're seeing at the moment is really the group of students that we're going to be calling out in terms of the students that took these assessments or leading indicators, one being the FERSA, the foundational reading skills assessment. And we're going to dive into our TK data first, and then we'll transition into K1 and two FERSA data. And then moving on to our SBAK, I, our SBAK data, because I Ready we covered in June. So we begin with our FERSA proficiency for transitional Kinder. At the end of this academic school year, the 23, 24 school year, nearly half of our TK Kinder students were proficient or met standards overall, for overall proficiency, which was an increase from last year. Something to note though, is that we also had a larger number of TK students enrolled this year compared to the previous year. So our numbers are increasing and specifically the previous year, we had approximately 1,100 students in TK. This year, we had about 1,500 students, an increase that obviously you see also in the numbers in regards to proficiency. So that's a, a positive highlight in regards to FERSA. Then when we move on to K1 and 2, we also saw some increases in each of the grades, but we noted that Kinder had the largest overall increase in the met and exceeded with 12% additional exceeded in this school year. And so often we are asked, like, what could we contribute to that? I know, Dr. Benitez, you have, you have posed that question. And so we've thought about ways that we can look at our practices and things that we can say, quantify and say like, that is absolutely correlated. And we can say that the correlation between the increase that we saw in Kinder definitely had to do with the alignment of the assessment to instruction as well as the state standards. And previously we mentioned that we did do an analysis in partnership with our, our labor union, looking at what we assess on the, on the TK FERSA should match what the state is asking us. So again, that's that thought partnership and also looking through and making those adjustments. Grade one saw a modest overall Grade one saw a modest overall increase, um, in the met and exceeded with 3%. But something to note is that they added 12% to the exceeded, um, category. So we were seeing some increases moving along in all of the grades. Now, grade two went up 2%, but what I want to also call out is that, um, in second, second grade, the assessment is not as robust as in K and one, and we're not necessarily assessing the same skills. Um, so we're seeing the kids trending in the right direction in all of our early grades, so K1 and two. So that is for us, something that we want to further explore in regards to that transition from second grade to third grade and the assessments that we're using that are giving us more of intel in regards to preparing them to take those, um, high stakes tests in third grade.
Sure.
Sorry, I just wanted to add, um, that next year we'll be changing, um, how we look at, um, fluency and adding that into the overall proficiency and on-track data so that it's all like one kind of, uh, metric that a teacher can look at. So they, um, you know, once they've had the foundational skills, the next step is really to get their fluency up and then, you know, build that into reading comprehension. So that mapping is something that, like, they've done a lot of intentional work. I think, you know, I know I've heard from both OCIPD and Cr- um, the elementary level that all of the, the work that they've done on the daily routines that they've implemented this year have led to that big increase in the met exceeded numbers, which means that the kids are, you know, getting ready earlier to read, you know, become more fluent and then build that into the reading comprehension. So it's like, you know, kind of like baby steps that we're going through. And so next year, the focus is going to be to, you know, you know, really dive into that tier one, but really get into tier two and tier three support so that we can move the kids that are not met or nearly met into the, the met exceeded category. So it's a lot of really good work on those, in those departments.
I, I think I'm lost, that last point was lost on me. Um, can, can you, um, talk a little bit more about the connection between fluency and, um, the reading assessments here that we're doing?
So, you know, as they're building their foundational reading skills, you know, they're learning their letters, they're, you know, learning how, you know, phonics works, right? So they're, as they're building that, getting into the fluency is actually reading passages and reading them fluently. So, um, they are, they started tracking that, uh, last year for everybody, um, starting in second grade. And I think they did have at the end of first grade, some of that fluency, uh, metrics. But those are kind of right now living separately from foundational reading skills. And I think we want to build them into one metric. You know, have them separate, but build them into one metric so that you can see overall what, not just with the foundational reading skills, but with fluency, what that looks like. And then be able to use that data to then build in how we get to reading comprehension.
If I may, just, just for clarification, fluency really has three parts. So one is the speed at which students are reading. Another is the accuracy and the third is escaping me. It's the, um, it's like the, the intonation, the right, um, pacing, but that's not the term. It's the expression. Thank you, Dr. Lynn. So yes. So when we talk fluency, it's really that combination of speed, accuracy and expression. And yes, in addition to knowing how the sounds and letters sound and go together, but now we want students as the, in the get into first and second grade to start reading with fluency in, in those three ways.
And what Hamina spoke to is what teachers had been learning or relearning from any of them who have been teachers of reading instruction, um, being reminded or relearning. Those are the routines that Hamina made reference to that have been newly revisited in every teacher having the opportunity to participate in training for reading instruction.
So now we're going to take a look at our grade three. As mentioned, we looked at iReady in June, but we're going to now spend some time looking at their SBAK data. Um, the SBAK data also serves as a summative, uh, measure for our grades that participate in, um, taking SBAK. So we're looking currently at grade three SBAK achievement levels. Nearly half of our grade three students met or exceeded standards, maintaining the 5% uh, that they met the previous year. So we maintain that percentage. We did not, um, dip down. So it's something that we further want to explore. What were some things that contributed to maintaining, um, and looking again at the practices? And speaking of, uh, SBAK, we're going to transition into board goal two, which is our reading acceleration goal, which states that the percentage of students in grades four through eight scoring at the not met achievement level in the prior year who met the skill to go growth target on the state SBAK English Language Arts Assessment will increase from 28% in June 2023 to 60% in June 2028. And our leading indicators are iReady as well as SBAK, but very important to note, we're specifically looking at the students that are in the not met range. So when we look at our students in the not met range, we're looking at students from the prior year. So we're talking about our current fourth, fourth graders who just completed fourth graders, or who just completed fourth grade, but were in third grade last year. So just keep that in mind. It's looking back. And what we saw is that we did see, um, students in this, um, particular, the not met grade that we did see some percentages, uh, decrease. But I think the next couple visuals are going to really give you more of an understanding of what does that mean when we're talking about the band, which is this next slide. Um, so what we saw is that students, for example, in the middle, um, achievement level bands were less likely to, um, they're less likely to remain in the same level. So we saw movement from that middle band. Um, and then we also noticed that when we look at our next slide, that overall 69% of the not met students remained in the not met and that these students will be in our goal two, um, analysis. So when we talk about, so here's the data. So what now? What's our next step? We know that students are remaining, as we're seeing that students from the not met are moving up. And this visual kind of gives you the percentage and also the number of students that from the not met, we did have, you know, 34 students that from not met went up to the exceeded and then to the met and nearly met, and then some that remain. We want to find out what was it that contributed to not only those that are staying in the not met, but what's helping those that are moving up. So not looking at just like what's happening with not met. We want to learn from what were those practices? Was it prac- particular practices at school sites or professional development? What were some of those dispositions that we need to look further into that can help us learn about students that are moving up to help us with, um, our further analysis of this particular goal? In addition to looking at students that were moving, we also saw, we wanted to look at the decline to not met. Who's moving into the not met and, and really understanding who are the students, what are, who, who are the students and what grades are they in? And so we did see similar to the previous slide that we did see some from the not met that went up, but also from the exceeded that came all the way down to the not met. Um, and then you can also see that from the band, the met and the nearly met, we saw some moving down. Um, the nearly met, we saw a higher percentage of students moving down to the not met. So again, restating that further studies need to be conducted, uh, internally to learn more about the not met students. We also found that students who are previously in the nearly met category were more likely to change their achievement level. And that was very interesting to us to see the, the movement within the nearly met. Again, further studies around like, why is it that students in that middle, like that nearly met are making more movement, um, either up or down than other students? Um, and so that is something internally that our, uh, team has started to look at. An example that we, um, participated in a beginning preliminary study is really plotting all our not met students across our district to see where they're falling. And what we want to do is, uh, conduct like a two-year study on the particular, on students, um, that are in the not met to see, do they move up? Do they move down? What grades are we seeing that they're moving down or up? And when we're talking about the not met students, we want to call out, well, how many students are we talking about? We're talking about roughly 6,680 students that are, um, in the not met category. And we're able to also, we wanted to make sure we disaggregated the data so that you're able to see it by race and ethnicity. So you're able to see the percentage of our African-American, black students that are falling in the not met, Asian, Filipino, Hispanic, Pacific Islander and white students. Uh, we also want to, uh, call out the obvious that our black African American student rate was four times the rate of our white students. And Hispanic student rate in the not met band was three times the rate of white students. So just in summary, in regards to the updates of our, uh, board goal one and two progress monitoring, in terms of growth, we had nearly 30% of students who met that target growth, which was the same rate as last year. As we, um, call out achievement, 31% of the not met in the prior year students grew enough to move up one or more achievement levels. Um, and then the focus for next year will be to really do more of an in-depth study around our students that are in the not met and learn more about who are the students, um, that are in the not met and, um, study them for more than one year. So I'm going to pause here. I know, um, Hamina wants to add something and then we'll pause for questions.
Just something I wanted to add, um, we set the board goal targets, um, much higher than the traditional targets. So there are like sometimes three, two and a half, three times the rate of a, a traditional, um, uh, annual target that we would have for a student. Um, and what we saw was there's some kids that actually moved up a band or two. So they moved up achievement levels, but we couldn't count them in meeting the board goal target because we set it, you know, too high. So they were basically probably on the cusp of moving up and they did. So they did, you know, there's, there's some analysis that we want to do and share with you guys to say, you know, if we included these students, what would our data look like? So.
So, um, when you talk about, um, taking a closer look at who these students are and, and what's working, what's not working, would that include looking at a school by school, um, kind of analysis to see, uh, you know, school A has a, um, an improvement level that's up here and school B, their improvement level is down here. What is school A doing that school B is not doing? Is, is that part of the, um, uh, analysis of what's taking place?
So we've just begun. It's a preliminary study. So what we have, that we've started to do is first identifying our students. Identifying students and then, um, identifying subgroups that they belong to, as well as then looking at schools. And looking further beyond just the schools, but looking at similarities among schools and also, um, what they participate in. For example, looking at something that we're very curious around is if a school has a high percentage of, uh, teachers participating in certain professional development as an example, do we see correlation between the participation rate and the, the actual like percentage of students that are meeting as an example on SBAK or iReady? So we're having those initial conversations around what are going to be those measures that we're going to look at and, um, how are we going to really hone in or have more of a laser focus? Because we only get so many different things like students, demographics, school settings, but we know that it's so much more than just one thing.
Can I add to that, Dr. Madrigal? Um, one of the things that has been very alive for us in our learning is thinking about, just like you all are thinking about adult inputs and how a board changes to set the stage for district level change. Our team, um, extensively is studying the role of adult inputs as leading indicators to changes for student outcomes. And to be really specific, what I mean is if we only look at the outcomes and continue to say, that should change, that should change, but we don't intensely focus on what the inputs for the student, that what needs to change in terms of inputs, teaching, interventions, family supports, engagement. Those are inputs that lead in the theory, in our theory of action, like those in the strategic plan, that lead to changes and how students both experience education and have more success academically and socially emotionally. And so I just want, I want to name that because we think about the stories and the shift of focus for the now research and student outcomes office. This aspect of learning beyond just reporting data, the reporting of data is very important to be transparent with our data and for naming the specific areas that are of greatest need. And change does not happen for students without adult inputs changing. And so just, you're going to hear us learning more and more about that. And what does it mean to monitor the adult inputs that have the mo- the greatest possibility for impacting student experience and student outcomes? So, yeah.
Dr. Baker, um, so I'm going to read into even a little bit more what, what I think, um, you're saying. Does what you just shared include or, or mean, also mean, um, for the 26% of students, of nearly met students that are moving, that, that we see more movement from, um, are we considering things like, um, there may be different factors as to what the not or the nearly met versus those students that remained in the not met? Is that what we're talking about?
And so when Dr. Madrigal said stu- further study, it's not further, it's not just further study of the data itself. It may involve student focus groups. It may involve engaging with families. And it will definitely involve looking at things that were considered interventions or acceleration mechanisms to then start to, um, unveil some of what is more effective or less effective. And especially as we consider, you know, requests for investments, next year's budget, we, those are the, the ways that we want to be making decisions and not just looking and either admiring or admonishing the outcomes. Because that is actually in many ways, putting a deficit lens on our students who are subject to all of the adult inputs of our system. And when we look at those results, the continued results, both places of bright spots and less success, we don't want to focus on as if we're talking about the students didn't succeed, but thinking about how our inputs did not meet the needs yet of students. And then working with all of our staff to say, what do you need to feel more equipped and more empowered and to increase your toolkit to contribute your inputs to student success?
Yeah, yeah.
And I'm trying, I'm simplifying it also because I think it's important for our public to know what we're up to in terms of thinking about the relationship and not just, um, just the outcomes. And I don't, I, I don't say just lightly, but I feel very sensitive to the way that we talk about our students and those outcomes without right away putting the mirror back on ourselves and saying, what are our inputs? What are the boards? And, you know, what are you thinking about in terms of board, board, adult inputs and behaviors in the boardroom? What are we thinking about in terms of leading indicators in the strategic plan? Um, that are how we, how we need adults to be showing up for students in different ways to change the system, to change adults that in the center are our graduate, what we want for, to be true for our graduates in Vision 2035, the portraits that you all approved.
So, Dr. Baker, for future, not for today, but, um, it is a goal two, uh, uh, friendly suggestion. Could you and the team, Dr. Baker, think of ways for us as a board? Uh, again, we set these goals and adopted these goals as a board, but it was based on the content expertise of, you know, we didn't just randomly say we want a 30% increase year to year, uh, even though Hamina just shared that these are lofty, courageous goals. They were based on something, right? So for me, when Dr. Madrigal and the team share that, um, African-American students are four times more likely to not meet than our white students. Latinx students and Pacific Islander students are about three times more likely to not meet. meet than our white students. Even though this goal, you know, is for all, what is it, grades three to, four to seven? Three to seven? Okay. There is a strategic, explicit, targeted, so, so, again, I, I think it would be wise for us, because Goals Three and Four then center black students, to know more about what's going on on the input side, given that elementary school will have potentially important impacts on how we look at Goals Three and Four. So much appreciation for disaggregating this data, because then, again, I would ask, can you give us some help?
Yep.
In terms of understanding, hey, this is all students, but we see a huge, continue to see a huge disparity amongst our black students and our Latinx students. So just off putting that up as a...
And for the moment, Dr. Benitez, what I will share is you're going to have a preview of the monitoring calendar that will come for a vote tonight and very much centering not just the narrative stories, but to build in schools' efforts around adult inputs, in many cases featuring where there has been greater success, to really tease out what does it look like when adults are shifting and learning and growing as in their professions in service to the brutal facts of what exists right now? And what are the inputs that you all have made investments in from a budgetary perspective? And we all are monitoring for adult shifts. And so that is, that is built into, as Dr. Madrigal has said, like, the stories, the narrative behind the scenes that don't often get told when you're, when you're solely deducing to metrics that don't tell the whole story. So you're going to see that incorporated into. And then also, another thing I wanted to just highlight, and Veronica said this, but another report, and it was referenced as closed session. So while the board goals have a very focused intention to them, also the executive summary that this year was an opportunity for us to learn our way into something new that will be made public is connected to my evaluation. It includes the monitoring of English learners, it includes the monitoring of other groups of students, so that the public will also have access to that report that's connected to my evaluation that you all used with me in looking at the greater sense of both accomplishment and challenges in terms of meeting the needs of our students. So just as a reference tool, making sure that that was where that was, the workshop that we did related to my evaluation is where you saw the more expansive set of end-of-year data.
I think that's a great transition into our next section, because you did have an opportunity to receive that executive summary, which was something that we did that was different, but we wanted to provide more context and information. And sometimes in these settings, we don't always have the time to be able to talk about all the data points, but it's important to understand who we serve in the district, whether it's by looking at our subgroups, looking at who are our multilingual learners. And in the future, we, we would like to provide some of those, a type of summary, an executive summary, that maybe we're calling now what we're finding in our studies. That could be a way, and then that is something that can be incorporated into sharing publicly. So in the executive summary, as you recall, we provided broader data that supports our broader district goals and just our student outcomes. And we shared some data around S-Back, ELA, and math. And so what we're going to spend some time today looking at is our ELA, S-Back achievement overall by levels. And so you had an opportunity to take a glance at, how did we do compared to last year? And so when we look at overall, we did see some gains, small gains, but you're able to see third through fifth grade, we made a little bit of gains, we're moving some students out of some of the not met, nearly met, to the met and exceeded. And then we also disaggregated this data by level, so we have middle school there for you. And we wanted to call out high school, only our grade eleventh participates in S-Back. Then when we disaggregate the data based on race and ethnicity, we are able to see that Hispanic students or Latinx students, that thirty percent, thirty-four percent met or exceeded, and our black African American met or exceeded rate was at forty-three percent. So we did see slight gains there with Pacific Islanders making more gains specific to their subgroup in ELA. We also wanted to take a look at, how did our special population students perform on the S-Back? So when we look at our English learners, we saw some gains, a five percent gain. And when we looked at our special education students, we noticed an increase of one percent. And so when we talk about special ed, I want to make sure that we're clear that we're speaking about any student that receives special education services, and that includes our mild to moderate students in special day classes, not our moderate to severe classes. Sometimes there's confusion on who are we talking about as it pertains to special education. So we wanted to be clear on who the students are that participated in taking S-Back. Now we move on to our math achievement overall by level, again disaggregated by elementary, middle, and high school. When we look at math, overall, we have like a one percent gain, which in the exceeded category, elementary led with a three percent gain, while middle school saw a two percent gain. High school, with just, again, keeping in mind it's only eleventh grade, we did see a decline of two percent. And in high school, it's eleventh grade, and one of the areas that Mr. Samuels and I have talked about as part of our partnership is looking at that participation rate, and that'll be work that collaboratively we'll look at for this year and ways that we can increase so that when we're disaggregating data by levels, we have more of a, of a number to look at and say, like, this is representative of high school. With math in regards to race and ethnicity, we see that in EL, I'm sorry, in math achievement by race and ethnicity, similar to the ELA data, all groups increased except white students stayed the same, and, and their increase was different compared to Asian students, Filipino multiraces. So you're able to see, like, the differences in between all our different groups. And also with math, we saw in regards to special population, English learners saw an increase of four percent with students who are receiving special education services with a two percent increase overall. I'm going to pause here just because I want to give you an opportunity to engage in a conversation, also including everyone that is in here to be able to ask questions before we transition into our Spring Pulse Wellness Survey.
I do have a question. Excuse me. On page twenty-one, when we're looking at our students and how they performed in the S-Back ELA, we're seeing that sixty-six percent of our black African American, fifty-eight percent of our Latino, Latina, Latinx, and fifty-eight percent of our Pacific Islanders are not meeting the standard. And when we look at on page twenty-four, at the math, S-Back, eighty percent of our black African American, seventy percent of our Latino, Latina, Latinx, and seventy percent of Pacific Islanders are also not, are also underperforming there. I think this question is, you know, for our staff, for our senior staff here, is what is a plan for this coming year? We've invested millions of federal funds into intervention programs, and yet more than half of these student groups are underperforming. What's a plan come, come, come September, come August, at the end of the month, for our students?
I, I would ask our team to speak just briefly, because they could not present a plan on the spot in the way that you're requesting it, but to speak briefly to what is planned for professional learning experiences. And I'll, I'll kind of take us back to thinking about the adult inputs. If we want students to succeed differently, we need to equip our team, in particular, our teachers and administrators at school sites, to, to feel both equipped and empowered to meet the needs of students in different ways. That includes also a lot of thinking about mindsets and what we expect for our students. So, I don't know, Dr. Lynn, do you want to speak broadly, or Brian, about professional learning, just what is planned generally? And then perhaps there are some specifics that address some of the English learner, professional learning, and the development of the EL Master Plan that might give, at least for English learners specifically?
And I think that's a good point, Dr. Baker, because, I'm sorry, it is incredibly unacceptable that only fourteen percent of our ELs and seventeen percent of our special ed students are meeting the standards in ELA. And then looking at math for both of these groups, only fourteen percent of our special ed and twelve percent of our ELs are meeting the standard in math.
So I can start us off with just, the framing around our theory of action is obviously that adult behavior shift student outcomes. And part of that is a premise around improving tier-one instruction and using professional learning as a driver of improving tier-one instruction, which essentially means how do we improve the teaching, the good first teaching that needs to happen with all students across subjects and grade levels? So we've made a huge commitment this year to replicate and go deeper into the quality core instruction training that we rolled out this past year with every teacher. Last year was the first year that we actually did face-to-face training with every teacher in our system. So more than three thousand teachers received at least two full days of training, some of them upwards of four days. And it was specific to their grade level and their content. So we had a strict focus on K-two literacy at the elementary level, three-five math. And I think you see that in the data that Dr. Madrigal shared in the improvements on FERSA, focusing on our K-two literacy teacher, teachers. And then in math, when you look at the gains in math at the elementary level, we had the largest gains at the elementary level. We did intentional work with three-five math teachers, and those S-Back results are obviously a reflection of, I think, some of that intensive professional learning that we're doing. We've made a commitment to deepen that professional learning this coming year and replicating two to four days of additional training, face-to-face training, with the expectation of going deeper into the content and transfer into the practice. So a teacher can attend training and go back and do nothing with it, in all honesty. I can go to a training at the TRC, I can sit in that training, and then I can come back to my classroom and not change any practice. So what we're designing in our professional learning for this coming year is really professional learning experiences that support teachers in the implementation of those practices, opportunities for modeling and practice, and then implementation, feedback, and refinement of those practices through intentional professional development structures, once again, specific to the level and the content of the curriculum. So that is one part of these levers, and I think that our, our level offices can talk about some of the other key levers around our, you know, plans for next year to improve student outcomes.
So focused professional development is definitely one of our key levers, and I'll just say that that's not just happening for teachers, that's also happening for our principals, as our principals spent each month last year a dedicated hour receiving training from LECO on foundational reading skills. And we saw, of course, as was presented, the growth of that. But I would also like to speak to one of our key levers as we are building teams at each one of our elementary sites. And a key part of that team is what we call or refer to as an IIC, that stands for Instruction and Intervention Coordinator. We will have an IIC at each one of our sites, and their primary job function is to support teachers with tier-one instruction. And what that looks like is co-planning lessons, it, it looks like modeling lessons, co-creating, doing lesson studies. Those are all the examples that Dr. Lund explained of what we mean by deepening the actual learning. That role also holds the responsibility for coordinating the interventions. I had an example of one of our sites, but for time, I would say that that looks like breaking down where each individual student is, the small group that that student is involved in, the focus of that small group, and the materials that are being used. So making sure that we're able to support at the individual student level. So having teams and making sure that we have our principal, our IIC, we have math and ELA leads, and at non-title-one sites, we have designated teachers who are classroom teachers, but will also be receiving the same sort of training as our math and ELA leads to ensure that we're increasing tier-one instruction. And those are some of the adult inputs or adult key action steps that we are looking to take at the elementary level.
The, the thing I would add, I'd add two quick things. One, Board Member Lopez, you'll, you may have noticed on our monitoring calendar that is coming to you for approval this evening, set for October is an opportunity for senior team to share our goals and action plans that include the adult actions that each of us and our, our directors and our principals will be specifically taking in relation to our goals. So I think we can get more specific in October. We can give some examples, we're giving them now, but we can be very specific as we go through our, our monitoring process to be very clear on some of those actions. Something that as a senior team and as, as our directors are currently thinking about, learning about, working with the amazing team that's developing the Center of Black Student Excellence, the team that implemented a really powerful Sankofa Summer Program, we're really thinking deeply about culturally responsive and sustaining practices and culturally affirming environments, and how do we ensure that those are in all of our schools, not just in those places where teachers maybe already have the knowledge and skill? So that will continue to be developed through our professional learning this year coming, going forward, in addition to the practices that you heard Dr. Lund reference, bringing in those, we know, we know what some of those practices are that are working for students, and we don't want those to be just students who are lucky to have teachers that have that skill. So how do we bring in the culturally responsive and sustaining practice across our system for both leaders and teachers? And then how do we make sure that all of our school and classroom environments are culturally affirming? And while that is, that is not a necessarily a specific answer for every student who is not yet meeting, we know that those strong tier-one classroom environments are going to be how we move forward. When we, you, you saw the data that we're at, well above seventy percent in foundational reading for kindergarten. And actually, Dr. Benitez, a little bit ago, you, you were referencing kind of like, as we look at our, our goals and think about them, we're already thinking about how we increase our interim goals for kindergarten for next year, because we already know, based on the practices we, we implemented this last year through strong training and, and coaching and support, we're already seeing improvement in those grades. So those just would be a couple of, maybe initial responses, Ms. Lopez, but knowing that we can provide a more thorough description of the adult actions we plan as we move forward this year.
Thank you, and that would be great, just because, again, now I'm thinking that we won't have all the funding that's come in and all of the programs, all of the intervention programs that we've invested in, and yet our kids, you know, these groups are falling so far behind. And, you know, we can celebrate the one, you know, the one-point gain, the two-point gain, but that's minimal. We're, we're really not serving our students the way we should be. And, and I think that there's definitely a need for us to look at this critically and say, what will we be doing come September to ensure that these kids have the resources, have the, the teachers out there who can come to us and say, "This is what we need from you to make, to ensure that our kids succeed in the classroom." So, you know, I, I, I look at our, our ELs, for example, and our special ed students are performing better than our ELs. That's, that, that's a big problem, and, and a big problem we need to address. Our Pacific Islanders, our Latinx students, our black African American students, most of those in our school district are not meeting the standard in ELA or math. So we definitely need to quickly look at what we're doing and make sure... So we definitely need to quickly look at what we're doing and make changes, because what we've done for the last few years clearly has not been helping our students.
Mr. Moskowitz, thank you, Ms. Lopez. So building on Ms. Lopez's comments, I would, maybe I would ask this, Mr. Moskowitz, for We just adopted these board goals this last year, right? And we talked about empowering our team to pivot and scale and build, and we've had conversations around, we may not see what we want to see or expect to see, but that doesn't mean start from scratch, right? And I don't think Ms. Lopez is alluding to starting from scratch or anything like that. But we did get in the last plus year, really, I think, powerful examples of where it is working, where there are some promising practices that we knew about and are sort of rethinking or reimagining them. So I'm going to ask a question from what President Craig had shared earlier. I'm curious, see, I'm using some student outcomes-focused governance. I'm curious more about who our students are in relation to Dr. Baker's sort of, you know, I think at this point, it's more than a philosophy, right? It's a practicum in action here. What is contributing to movement or lack of movement in relation to, my curiosity is, what's going on at Lincoln? We had a wonderful presentation of the positive things that we're seeing at Lincoln, whether that's combination of principal and classroom, we know that the classroom has the biggest impact on this, with the students at Lincoln in relation to the subgroup information that we have presented on an ongoing basis. And that's code for, we have a higher percentage of those students that are underperforming at schools like Lincoln than we do at other schools. But my curiosity is like also, for schools that maybe have 6% African-American students or Black students, what, is there a different experience for those 6% Black students at another school than for a school that has 24% or 28% Black students? And I would argue the same thing for our ELs, for our S-PET students. So here's what I would think, ask us to consider, Mr. Moskowitz, whether that's in October or at the following, you know, I got to go back and see if we want to tweak the monitoring calendar a little bit here. Here's why I'm asking, because, what I'm asking to consider, all right? Unless our communities vis-à-vis our board meetings and then all the stuff that happens in between, I think hear about how we're then thinking through those examples that you all have done, we've had students come in here from Browning saying, do more of this, right? We've had classroom teachers saying, this is what we're observing in my classroom, here's the partnership piece with that. I think for me, it's okay. Those are, I believe, no longer isolated examples of proven, tried practices, supports, strategies that are very intentional. What we tried to do, I'm going to articulate here for the board, is we can't do 100 things. We're doing 100 things, but we can't do 100 things successfully at the same level. The plan here for me is, you know, we're building it, right? We're building it, we're pivoting, but I do want to hear about, we know what's working at some schools in some classrooms, whether it's through the IICs, Mr. Z, or whatever. What is the plan for how we're going to utilize that next year, right? Because we established some, and I'm not saying they were, all of a sudden, they magically appeared last year, but we're holding ourselves accountable to now these four goal areas. Some of the stuff may have been happening, Sankofa, we have a new director for our Black students. I'm very interested, as part of this plan, to hear about, here's how we're using, utilizing, thinking about the stuff that we've already shared with you that's working, and here's either how we're either scaling or strengthening or making this be more robust or resilient, because there's investment that has to take place for us to be able to do that. And we adopted a budget, an outcap, that prioritized 11 buckets. I'm hearing at least five of those buckets, just in presentations like this. So again, my consideration, I've said it in different ways before, is help us connect the priority with the practices and/or systems, and then the investment that's needed to then, for that second year, Mr. Moskowitz. So not the, you know, the plan can be there, but that doesn't mean we can't change the plan or strengthen the plan. I'm interested more for the leading indicators, the first-year interim goals, how are we using what we already know to work and/or lifting those things that we know are not working because the numbers are still not good, so that then we can figure out, okay, how do we do more of that, lift up more of that? And/or how do we have conversations as a board when we're not seeing what we should be seeing? Because at the end of the day, those board goals were developed and adopted by us, right? So if we're going to hold you to expectations on recommendations about goals, it behooves us as a board to say, okay, we had a plan, we have a plan, how are we going to support our leaders here to do more, less, to think about? Because I don't want to get caught up that at every time in the monitoring calendar, we will overly scrutinize that one set of data in the abstract. And I think, again, my consideration, Mr. Moskowitz, is you're the lead, you're the point person on this, I think you have to give us something for us to say, okay, shortcomings here, 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 and that's been done, right? We have data. But I think we need to hear more than, for next year and year three, here's what's awesome at Jordan. Here's what's awesome about the HBCU visits. And for us to then wonder, where is the correlation with what we invested in, with what we're saying is working, and ultimately with how we're then advancing on those goals, right? Not a today thing, but now that we have goals, now that we're going to adopt the monitoring calendar, I think we as a board then, instead of, and it's not based on me negating what Member Lopez is saying, but instead of me thinking about, okay, well, that plan has to change, or we got to do this, or we got to do that, it's what, how can you then present to us information that then we can make sense of? Because I'm telling you, I've said this many times, we'll get a new set of data for new goals next time, and it's really hard, right, in one or two meetings a month, and if half of those meetings do not include student outcomes. For me to think back to this workshop this summer when we had this discussion, I was long-winded there, Brian, but I'm trying to help you all, help us, because the next time I'm going to come back, and I may ask the same question, Board Member Lopez, what's the plan? I'm not seeing what we're supposed to be seeing here. So, Brian?
So I'll quickly reiterate, thank you, Dr. Menendez, I'll quickly reiterate two things that both Dr. Baker and Dr. Lund said that I think is getting to what, maybe what you're asking. So you heard Dr. Baker say earlier that we as a leadership team and flowing down into principals down in the classrooms, we really need to focus more on the adult inputs. What are the adult actions that are getting the results and that we expect all teachers, all principals, to be demonstrating? And how will we monitor those actions? So in addition to seeing, how are the student outcomes showing up in June? Well, prior to that, we should be saying in September and October and November, these things need to be happening, and we should be monitoring those. And we are in process of creating that, that we can bring back to you what that will look like. You also heard Dr. Lund reference the deepening of the professional learning through coaching, through in-class support. We know we have teachers who are already deeply implementing the instructional practices that we expect all teachers to implement, and likely through, as we get into classroom, those are the classrooms where we're getting these outlier results. So it's not that we don't know what the practices should be, it's the accountability as a system that we have for all teachers, all principals, all leaders acting on those actions, implementing those actions. No more opting out for people who choose not to or don't for whatever reason. So it is monitoring the adult actions, holding ourselves accountable to the data related to those adult actions. It is deepening the learning for principals and teachers and others. I say those two specifically because teachers are the most critical, principal's second greatest impact on student achievement. So we have to focus on those two. But when I speak to bringing back in October our action plans, it is specifically to that. What measurable things will we be doing as adults that we can track on? And as we track on those through the year, we should then not be surprised by seeing positive outcomes at the end of the year, because those adult actions, as we monitor them, we believe will track to that. So that's, again, that's the short answer that I would say in response to what you just shared.
And I'll add that this will be disruptive in our system. So when the board sets for very high-level goals and says to us that the data is unacceptable and looks at subgroups of students, there has to be a plan and the system that has been oppressive, not just in Long Beach Unified, but in our nation, which was the genesis for an excellence and equity policy that acknowledged much of that oppressive systematic racism. We are going to be disrupting a system that is made up of humans. And I say that with deep empathy for what it means for someone to show up every day in a role directly teaching students, supporting students, implementing an individual education plan for a special education student, providing support services for an English learner, and what it means to think in the shoes and in the mind of a person who is doing their best and needs to change. And I say that with a mirror in front of myself, as I have deeply learned over the last, in particular, the curve of learning that I can say I've experienced in the last few years, and what that means, and what that needs to mean for everyone in our organization, because Vision 2035 will not be achieved in this room. Vision 2035 and the Related Strategic Plan, the strategic plan are many of the inputs that will change the outcomes, will only be actualized should every of the 10,000 adults that in some way, either directly or indirectly, serve our students, look in the mirror, and with the students who we serve, either build on their practices, or if they have already reached the highest levels of actualization of all students, they share what they know with others at their school site, with their departments, with their grade level teams, with their principals, so that we achieve what we aspire to for our students. And I say that with the utmost humility. Change is hard for adults, and it will require every person, even the highest performing teacher, if it's, if part of their change is that they need to share more, include others, share their lesson plans, share their methodology, that may be the change for one person. Whereas another person may need to absolutely reimagine the way that their classroom works so that we don't see Black students sitting in the back, we don't see English learners silent in some classrooms, that we don't see traditional instruction that only meets the needs of 40% or 30% of our students. And that kind of change does not happen overnight. That is adaptive change, that is a work in progress, and it requires all of us, but every employee in this district to achieve Vision 2035.
Dr. Baker, I wholeheartedly agree with that. And I also think we need to reflect, because a lot of the times, it's easy to say, okay, well, at the school site or in the classroom, things aren't happening. But we also have to remember that they're doing as we are telling them to do. So they're implementing the programs that we have. So we all have to reflect on the programs that we have as a district, the things that we're asking them to do, and maybe it hasn't worked. And we have to also, at this level, reflect on how we want to maybe listen to them at the local level, listen to the principals, listen to the teachers, listen to those aides, and say, what do you need from us? How can we better support you? So that they can also give us direction in how we need to move.
Yeah, I think that's a really good point, and I'll just tip back before we move on with the data presentation to the collection of data last year, when every teacher had an opportunity to have professional learning experiences. And maybe speak briefly, Chris, about how that data was used during the year to refine the learning experiences and also contribute to what has been planned from a deep teacher perspective for this year.
Yeah, so we learned a lot from our teachers regarding the QCI training that we rolled out in the fall, that was Quality Core Instruction Session One. It was overall positive training, but there was some really good feedback from teachers around what we could do different to better support them. So we made significant shifts to our Quality Core Training Session Two, based on the feedback that we received from Session One, to make it more interactive, to make it more inquiry-based, to really build upon the assets that teachers were bringing into that space to support them in their learning. And part of our extension for next year is, once again, building on that to really lead towards better implementation in the classroom. I'd like to circle back on some of our work with our EL students in particular. The EL data obviously is very frustrating. Cautionary note that any EL student who is met or exceeded, or even nearly met, likely will reclassify and will be removed from that list. So every year, you're starting with students who are generally not met in that group, just by design. It's the nature of how ELs are monitored and reclassified within the system. So that's just a cautionary as relates to that. That's not to say that we're doing right by our English learners. So some significant shifts that we're making for next year at the elementary level, we did some work this year around clustering English learners intentionally for next year based on level to really help teachers provide designated ELD. It's hard to provide designated ELD if I have all four levels in my classroom. If you can be really intentional in the clustering in the elementary classroom, you can provide more targeted designated ELD to the needs of the students. So that's first and foremost. Second to that is, we have a lot of new courses that we're rolling out in secondary in support of English learners, our Advanced ELD course, the two courses that you approved in the spring related to world history and the global arts, that will be required ELD classes. These are not just intervention classes that are elective in nature, they are required in nature. So ELs that are at a certain level will be required to be in these courses. So double-blocking of courses in both middle and high school, using CCR in middle school and those courses I just mentioned in high school. And then our new and last year program in middle school has shown huge success, so replicating some of those practices, deepening some of that work, the connection to parents within that program that we know we could probably do better on. We're looking at replicating that model in high school. So that will be an additional shift in programming. And then I guess I would say we are also building out specific interventions tied to each of those levels. Part of that is personnel-based, so we have some new EL TOSA support roles that are rolling out this year. And then we also have some targeted digital intervention programs, using Lexia English, using K-12 Summit, using Rosetta Stone for our newcomers, and then a whole new monitoring system for our ELs this year. So there's going to be some real tight monitoring, not just of placement into courses, but also of progress throughout the year. That has not been part of our system. So I share all that to say that we are not expecting different results without doing something differently. So all this is new to our system, will require shifts and quality of implementation, but will hopefully produce better results on behalf of our emerging bilingual students.
What about our re-designated EL students? How are we going to monitor them for the next four years?
Yeah, that actually has been built out this past year in a much tighter process. So we do have much better systems in place, using our elevation system, where we actually built in communication on a regular basis, where teachers actually have to indicate if students are making progress or not that have been reclassified. And that is a requirement of the federal program.
I would ask all of us to be extremely mindful, and I think we should lead by example, board members, not to pit one underserved subgroup of students against another. I worry with our community members that there may be a feeling of we're caring we're caring more about certain students than others. And I worry about framings around our students with disabilities are doing better than our ELs. So just would ask all of us to be mindful. When we're getting subgroup data, all of these students are underserved. Right? And then in addition, for me, because we didn't ask you and we can't ask you because you can't do everything, team. We have ELs that are also in SPECT. All right, we have black students disproportionately overrepresented in SPECT. So this is just me in the spirit of these conversations, that they're hard conversations, difficult conversations, and I'm including myself. Thank you. The mirror's in front of me. All right, because I oftentimes have to be more cognizant of making sure that our community doesn't feel that we're pitting one subgroup of student against another. So I'm not asking for a conversation. I'm just sharing my personal thoughts that I also need to be more cognizant of that.
And that was in my intent. I wanted to make, to say that both of these groups that definitely need help, both of these groups are not, are solo, underperforming. And both of these groups deserve for us to give them that attention and implement those programs to serve their needs. So in no way, shape, or form was I trying to make a comparison to say that one group ought to be performing better than the other. Neither one of these groups should be performing this low. If we have IEPs, if we have five or four plans in place, if our teachers are trained to know how to address the needs of our SPECT students and how to address the needs of our EL students, there's absolutely no reason why our students should be performing under the 20th percentile in ELA and math.
Thank you for clarifying that, Board Member Lopez, because that's not what I heard.
We need to move on. So I'll take this opportunity to get us going on the next part of the presentation for the Spring Pulse Wellness Survey. Thank you.
Thank you, Board President Craighead. And we talked a lot about adult inputs and what we are thinking about in the future. But something we haven't talked about is the student input. And we're going to take an opportunity at this point to look at our Pulse, our Spring Pulse Wellness Survey. And just to give you an overview in case you are not familiar with the Pulse survey, it is about a survey that takes approximately five minutes. Our students take the survey, fourth through 12th grade. And specifically, the survey is looking at three areas. Identity, agency, and belonging. And so I want to just define how Pulse survey defines identity before we get into the specifics of the data around identity. So identity is defined as having a strong sense of self in regards to age, gender, religion, or spiritual affiliation, sexual orientation, race, ethnicity, and socioeconomic status. And they are proud of who they are becoming as students and young adults. And some of the questions is an example, because often we hear about a survey, but there's curiosity. I know I've heard it from parents that are not as familiar. They're not taking the survey and they ask like, well, what is this thing? Like, what kind of questions are we being asked? And so an example would be, I think about different parts of my identity. I understand that a person's background can affect their values, beliefs, and what they think is important. I try to see the strengths in others who are different from me. So those are examples of the questions that students are asked. And so the data is showing that elementary and middle school students showed a moderate growth in the sense of identity. And although high school students remain at the same rate, it's still high, it's a favorable perception. So we broke out the data by levels because it's important for us to see our youngest students as they're moving along and their sense of identity. Then we also wanted to share a sense of identity as it relates to race and ethnicity, given that our other academic data has been disaggregated in this way. When we look at our subgroups, we're seeing positive perceptions in terms of sense of identity as it pertains to our different subgroups. So just to call out our black African-American students, 82% of them have a strong sense of identity. And our Latinx Hispanic students, 81% as well. So again, positive perception in regards to identity. We also want to look at our special population as it pertains to English learners and special education. We see that there is also a positive sense of identity. English learners, it remained the same. We didn't see changes, but with our special ed students, we saw 1% change. The second section of the survey is looking at sense of agency. And just like with identity, we want to define what is agency. So student agency gives students that voice and platform and a choice in how they learn. So student agency is ownership and really taking an active role or it's that process of engagement and empowering that they feel in regards to learning. Questions that relate to agency are, I have the power to change the way I am feeling. I can motivate myself. It's important to listen to the opinions of others when solving a problem. So those are some of the examples that are on this survey. And one that I found that I think is powerful is how much respect do students in your school show you? When we look at the specificity of that data, again, we're seeing a middle and elementary and middle school students, it's a moderate increase in terms of agency and it's favorable. High school declined slightly, but it still remains at that high end. Agency in regards to race and ethnicity. Also, we saw some gains or the data didn't change much as it pertains to our subgroups. As we move on to our special populations in regards to agency, we saw a percent increase in our English learners and our special education students. The data remained the same. Now, the final component of Pulse survey is belonging. And so by definition, belonging is really looking at the sense of feeling accepted and valued without expectations of conforming. So belonging suggests that there's a sense of connection and trust that needs to be built in order to engage in that co-construction and co-constraining and also thriving and seeing themselves being like part of the, like being part of the community. So questions that relate to belonging have to do with, I feel close to people at school? I'm happy to be part of the school? And also, how likely are you to attend a school activity? So the other question that I think is critical is that they ask the student, during the past 30 days, how safe did you feel at the school? So when we look at that data, we're seeing again, positive trends. And overall, across our levels, we're seeing that students are feeling a sense of, a positive sense of belonging. When we look at the belonging data as it pertains to our race and ethnicity as well, we're seeing across our subgroups, we're seeing some positive gains as well there. And finally, our students that are English learners or special education students, this was the category that we saw that both groups made some gains. So for the sake of time, I'm going to transition us into our core survey. And then I'll pause for any questions that the team has for us in regards to both surveys. So Core Culture and Climate Survey, and I didn't mention this with the Pulse survey. As a district, we've participated for two years in the Pulse survey. But as it pertains to Core, our district has been surveying our students since 2014, 2015. So we've had some time with this survey. We've learned some things about the survey. And as a district, we've also internally looked at some of the questions that we've asked and either removed questions or added questions as we've made shifts in our work as a district. So in regards to Core, we're looking at students take it annually. So that's the difference between Pulse. Pulse is given three times during the year. We give it in the fall, winter, and spring. Core is only one time. Typically, it's administered in February. And we're looking at culture and climate. So school climate indicators have been found to predict positive student achievement. And so when we look at the data, when we're looking across the levels, we're seeing that at the elementary level, we didn't see any change in our Core data. For middle school, we saw a slight dip. And then in the high school level, we saw a 3% difference from the previous year. When we look at disaggregated data for culture and climate, we did see that all our subgroups decreased slightly. It wasn't a huge change, but we did see some decreases. So that could be an area for us to further explore, not only what may be impacting, but also the type of questions that are on the Core. And then for special populations, we looked at English learners and special education. We also saw a slight decrease in terms of favorable results compared to the previous year. Then part of the Core survey also looks at the social and emotional learning as a component. And again, social emotional learning, I just want to call out the things that are measured. So we're looking at students' growth mindset, relationship skills, responsible decision-making, self-efficacy, self-management, and self-awareness. So that is what is encompassed in the social emotional learning aspect of Core. And when we look at our data across the levels, we did see some declines from the previous year. And as we look at our race and ethnicity in terms of disaggregating data, again, similar to culture and climate, we saw some decreases across our subgroups. And finally, looking at our special population groups, we saw some changes that were similar for both English learners as well as special education. We saw that we declined a bit. And what I want to emphasize with Core is that Core has more questions. It's not a five-minute survey. And we have to really consider when it's administered. There are a lot of, there are a lot of factors that come into play. And I want to call out the obvious. We administer in February and we're also doing a lot of other assessments in February. So that is a conversation that we have had internally in regards to the overlap and the oversaturation of surveys. And so that's where we're pausing. And when we talk about changes, that is one conversation around when we're administering it. Also, the window. Core is, if you're a parent in the district, you get those reminders to, you know, fill out the Core survey. And so, or reminders more for teachers like give out the survey. And it's a four-week window and that's a long time. And it's easy to forget to administer as well as, we have two holidays in February. I mean, that's, we have to think about timing, window, and also who's participating. So those are things that we are, we have looked at. We've made some internal decisions around those things that we hope will help when you look at those slight decreases. Next year, we want here, we want to be able to say, because of these changes, we're seeing that we went back up or even gained more. So I'm going to pause here for any questions that you may have in regards to either Pulse or Core.
I don't know whether there's any real meaningful questions that can be asked about this because the increases and decreases are so small that I wonder about the significance of anything. But I did see that the Pacific Islanders were either going up or down at a much higher rate than everybody else. And I wonder whether they had any thoughts about that.
What I do want to share when we look at, for example, Pacific Islanders, it's a much smaller number compared to some of our other subgroups. So we could look into for that small number of students. There are students who want to know what's helping them feel more connected. But it is a small sample compared to our larger subgroups.
Yeah, and it's only the trend of in all of these, you know, the sense of identity and and all of these things, they seem to be outliers compared to all of the other ethnic groups. And that's why it was interesting to me. If it wasn't just a question, I know it's a small group, but why, why it would trend that way? But it may just be speculation as to why that is. Do you have any thoughts?
I think just statistically, when you have a smaller group, so if you only had 20 students in a group and two students answered differently, that's a 10% decline. If you had a group of 2,000 students and a handful answered differently, it's not even going to show up statistically. So the smaller the group size, the more you're going to see swings up and down just by nature of the statistical model of that.
Okay.
First of all, I want to thank you, Dr. Madrigal, you and your team. Great presentation. And I just wanted to make a comment. I think that there's a clear correlation between the survey, the way our students are feeling for our black African-American students, our English learners, and our special ed, and then how they're performing also in, you know, in the SBACK exam. So, but thank you.
So just to add to what I understood Mr. Otto to be coming from, I don't, I didn't see a high degree of variance across subgroups. Is that a fair interpretation? Wondering to who's participating, or who's participating in the survey, Dr. Madrigal, do we see any, or how do we think about how parents respond to surveys and how students respond to surveys?
So I think, when I think about surveys for adults.
Parents and caregivers, sorry. Parents and caregivers, or whoever's filling out the survey. I apologize.
No, no worries. So when I think about surveys as it pertains to adults versus students, young adults, there's a difference because the learning or the conditions for administering the survey are very different. Right? And conditions could encompass language, access to the survey via, well, there's a couple of things. There's the ability to understand the access to the survey as well as accessibility to the device versus a paper version. Obviously, for us, it's, you know, I have to call out, it's electronically. Right? So that, that could be the conditions. That's for the adults. So we may see, we may see differences across our districts, our district in regards to caregivers participating more on one side of town versus another. But that's not to say that parents don't know better or don't give us input around the survey because now I'm going to talk about the students. Our students, the learning conditions, we have more control. And I'll speak about elementary and I, you know, anyone else that would like to add in regards to the conditions for administering, whether in middle or high school. For elementary, it's very controlled. For the most part, teachers know fourth and fifth grade. Sometimes there's a variety of different ways people do it. On this day, everyone's going to take Core. And so your percentage of participation is much higher with our younger students or elementary. Middle school, same. They probably take it homeroom at some type of Core class where it's expected. And high school, we do see a decline in participation because the learning conditions may be there, but now we're talking about younger adults. There's a choice there. So I actually, Mr. Samuels and I talked earlier and we talked about like, that is part of our work to look at practices and participation for our high school because we want to hear from them. Something that wasn't mentioned, and I feel that is critical to our work, whether it's our student outcomes work. It's really about what do our students want to tell us about learning conditions and how they learn and what they want to see in the classroom? And what do students want to hear or read on those surveys? So that's further work that we want to do in partnership with other departments and alongside Dr. Baker when we think about student voice. So asking, and there's a space there also for caregivers to ask. And I think that will be through our engagement office, communication, and putting us together and thinking about ways that we haven't thought about that aspect. So that's a lot to, I don't know if that answered your question, but I think that that is really encompassing that student and adult.
One factor I just wanted to add, this goes back to something that one of you mentioned or asked about was the why behind monitoring this data. And so different than your board goals in our district slash my superintendent evaluation goals, we know that there is a strong correlation between social emotional wellness or social emotional learning and student outcomes. And we are working hard also to think of the approach of what is referred to in the Aspen Institute's research of CED, Social Emotional in the Aspen Institute's research of CED, Social Emotional and Academic Development, that doesn't happen as a separate opportunity. You don't go to a class to develop separately your social emotional skill set, then go to another class and learn to read. You don't go study science in one class and then go learn how to be an adolescent and have the skills of, that you need to function. That's a journey for us in our district. It started, and you can, you can think back to a kickoff in 2021 where we talked about the way we wanted to start school. And there was a smart start and really approach to welcoming and thinking about not just minds but hearts, and it has worked its way into all of our curriculum development, our professional learning for teachers. But again, that requires adult inputs to change. And so that is another aspect. And adult input is survey administration. We have had a lot of opting out, and that is at an individual level. I'm sure there are many reasons. I'm busy, I'm, but to the degree, the opting out is to a degree that is also impacting how schools can respond to that data. So that's an adult input. We talk about our principals and principal supervisors, supporting schools in decreasing opting out. That's the kind of thing that we're talking about because if you only get a 30% response from your students at a high school, it only tells you a part of the story. And so we're working also on the adult input of things like survey administration so that that data can then be used to make changes and to address the outcomes that are different. I want to knowledge, and Dr. Madrigal, you may have said this early on, but there is a lot of stability in our social emotional learning data, including, and our research team has connected with Panorama, whose expertise is in this area, to say that we definitely want to look at disparate outcomes for groups of students, especially at the school level, if Black students are expressing or if English learner students are expressing a very different sense of belonging, for example. That is the work of a school and the support team that works with the school. Panorama will also tell us, we are in a place with very stable, and frankly, they have said to us, very high, stable levels in the areas that we continue to monitor. So it's really the precision, and then the pairing of this idea of a social emotional learning is part of academic learning, and the stronger sense of identity and sense of belonging and agency that students feel, that has a connection. If not a direct correlation, a strong connection, research-based connection to outcomes for students.
Dr. Baker, can I have a wondering question?
Yeah.
How then could we think about, if there is such stability and little variance, and we're getting praise, that we have such disparate student outcomes among the very same groups that have expressed strong sense of belonging and agency?
Yeah, and I'll say, when we think about continued study and an office that continues to drill down and like, what's the story behind it? What does the data show us? In fact, yesterday, we were having, we were engaged in an experience around learning from the focus group process with students. And part of what we were just really thinking about is, what does student voice tell you that data in a quantitative way doesn't tell you? And so in our learning journey, that's another aspect of how do we use the multi, many different approaches to research and both quantitative and qualitative to get underneath the stability or its disconnect, the disconnects academically in that way. So we're up to some next level work with our teams.
Okay, so if we don't have any more comments or inquiries or anything else, I'm going to propose that we change up our agenda to accommodate the, I guess, time parameters that we have left. But first of all, I'd like to thank you for the presentation. I appreciate the fact that at the very beginning of the presentation, you introduced our research team or those that could be here in person because we rely so much on research and so many decisions are data-driven. And a lot of times, we have people that are behind the scenes that we take for granted because we are presented with these beautiful materials and these beautiful presentations that provide so much information. And we don't always realize that there are a lot of people who work long and difficult hours to provide that. So I appreciate our research people being here and the fact that you have them with you and that you called attention to them. So thank you for that. So here's the new plan. Here's the new agenda. We will start at 11:40 to talk about our sustainability plan. We have students involved, so we have to be mindful of their schedules. Well, it's, yeah. And then we will have a recess for lunch from 12:30 to 1:00. And then from 1:00 to 2:00, we will continue with the facilities part of the presentation. And that means that we will forego having our advisory groups meet today. So right now, it looks like we are not having time for the advisory groups. And so we will take a pause for five minutes and reconvene at 11:40. Thank you, everyone. Okay, welcome back, everybody. We are going to dive right into our conversation about our district-wide sustainability plan. So I believe we will turn things over to Mr. Rising. So welcome and good morning.
Good morning. This opportunity to be here today and talk with the board and talk to us about work that really has been going on now for a couple of years with the development and the organization of some district-wide sustainability and energy work that's happening in the district. And really, I'm excited because this is a milestone moment in the work that we've been doing towards energy and sustainability goals. But before I move on, I want to introduce the folks that'll be talking to us today because it won't just be me standing up here talking to you today. We have a few other notable guests that are with us here. I'll start with Audrey Rust, who's a senior going into Soto Academy in just a few days. She'll be starting her senior year at Soto. We also have with us today another student, Luna Salazar, who's a senior that'll be starting Lakewood High School in just a couple of days. Yes, I'm sure they're both excited for that, for that experience, that senior experience that'll be starting in a couple of days. Just to my left, we have Pete Marsh, who's an environmental advocate, community member, and grandparent in our district, who's been working with us through this work. We also have, at the end of the row here, we have Firdaus Frazali, who's one of our senior program managers working in our facilities division. And she's been doing a lot of work with her team on some of the actual, actualizing a lot of these concepts that we'll be taking forward with our facilities program. So today, we're really just going to give you an overview of the agenda. We provided it to the board early, so you had an opportunity to review that. I hope you weren't doing that late at night because it, you know, it may be good to help cure insomnia. But there's some great stuff in there that we really wanted to go through. Looking for the clicker, which, oh, there we go. Thank you. Thank you. So really quick, our agenda, we're going to talk today a little bit about the background and some of the key drivers, about why we're here today and some of the work that we're doing, what's driving us to move this work forward. We're going to talk about our carbon emissions baseline results. So we spent a good bit of time looking at what's happening across our district. I apologize. So because of the option that we took, we're starting about middle of your slide deck on the district-wide sustainability plan, and then we'll be moving forward from there. So I apologize, I should have oriented you to this. So it's somewhere about the middle of the slide deck, yeah. There we go, thank you. So again, we'll talk a little bit about our carbon emissions baselining results. We spent a good part, over a year, looking at all of the activities that the district is engaged with, both at our school sites and our operations divisions, to really look at what our footprint is. We're going to talk about the framework and the strategies that we've identified for our sustainability plan, and we're going to talk about next phases of work, where we're going from here, and then an opportunity for some open discussion with the board about what those, what those concepts are. So a little bit about our key background and drivers. Really wanted to, wanted to talk a little bit about, I think I skipped a page here. Our society has been in flux, beginning in the early 2000s, even in the late 90s. There's been this focus on what's happening in our-
Mr. Rising, sorry to pause you. I'm not sure if we have the same.
So there were no changes except for cosmetic changes between the slide deck that you received last week and what was then handed out. So use your slide deck that you received last week.
Last week, okay.
Anything that you got today are just additional copies and only cosmetic changes.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. So as I was saying, our society has been moving in a direction associated with how we're identifying and working with environmental impacts. We're more acutely aware of the work that happens in our community as it relates to the environmental impact that our, that our society makes in the world. Beginning in early 2000, the state of California passed regulations to begin the process of reducing greenhouse gas emissions and reducing energy demands across our state. Those statutes have continued to progress and continue to strengthen as both the state of California, as well as local and regional folks, have implemented additional requirements for greenhouse gas emissions, energy reductions, and other sustainability goals. Ultimately, for the district, ending up in 2022, we ended up passing our own district board policy 3510.1, which was our sustainability and energy policy that really established the framework and the guidance leading forward that it's important that we do this work and that we continue to engage with our community and our student stakeholders to ensure that, that we're moving this work forward together in a collaborative way, focusing on student engagement, student outcomes, and making sure that, that the work that we do in our curriculum program is embedded in the work that we do. So I'll move into the next slide. And so our first guest speaker, I'm going to call up, or maybe she's going to sit. We have Audrey Rust, who's going to talk to us about the work of the green schools operations and what it means to our students that the district has adopted these goals and policies.
Hello, I am Audrey Rust. I am a Rising Senior at Soto Academy and have been president of the Soto Green Team for the past two years. So about the LBUSD's Green Schools Operations Energy and Sustainability Policy, it was adopted on August 17th of 2022 after a group of student activists from across the district came together in the Green Schools Campaign and advocated for changes that they wanted to see on their campuses resolving environmental issues. So they called out for the district to resolve these issues. And after it was passed, the district promised for the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions across the district. So the implementation goals of this policy include the reduction of energy use and water consumption for new and replacement machinery to be zero emissions and in compliance with green building standards, and also for the reduction of vehicle emissions in the district. So this is a really great start, and I became president of the Soto Green Team because I was sick and tired of seeing people going through their day-to-day lives and understanding the consequences of their actions on the environment. And I have seen these consequences firsthand, seeing pollution on the beaches, seeing pelicans drop from trees because they were sick, because they were sick and ill from toxins in the water, seeing sea lions be sick from algal blooms caused by greenhouse gas emissions, and also seeing birds on the shore decomposed with nothing left but a few bones and some feathers and a lot of the plastic that they ingested over their short lives. So for the past two years, the Green Team has been doing our best to solve these environmental issues on our campus to reduce our harmful impacts that some schools have. So our efforts include riverbed and beach cleanups, educational presentations, and working with other schools and being part of this task force. So it is really encouraging to hear that this policy is being implemented, knowing that the district is being part of the solution and having our back, having students back that, to implement solutions that we have worked hard for. So I wanted to thank the district for being part of the solution and having our backs with this policy. So, yeah, thank you.
Great, great, thank you, thank you. Another major element of this work, as we really looked at how broadly the sustainability energy goals extend, is the integration of this work and these goals into our facilities program. As we all know, we have an extremely large facilities program. It's doing work across our community, and making sure that we're looking at all of those aspects and how we do that work is so important. So we also have with us today Firdaus Frazali, who's from our facilities department. Talk a little bit about the work that they're doing to ensure that our energy goals are being incorporated into our facilities program.
Thank you, Helen. Hello, everybody. I'm happy to be here and thank you. My name is Firdaus Frazali, and I am Senior Program Manager with the Facilities and Development Branch. I'm overseeing the construction project within the facilities department. During the time that our Green School Campaign was going during the 2021, we also embarked in updating our Facility Master Plan. Facility Master Plan is a guiding document that identifies the needs for our schools and creates a roadmap for us, for the project to be implemented in order to have high-quality schools for every student, regardless of which campus they go to. So during this one year that we were updating our master plan, we collaborated with Long Beach Unified Leadership Stakeholders and Community Members. The Facility Master Plan was updated and published in 2022, identified 10 priorities that you see on the screen. Today, I want to focus on four of these priorities that are hand in hand with the sustainability plan that's being presented right now. We, for our Facility Enhancement Program, we use this document called Facility Designer Standards. Facility Designer Standards is a series of guidelines, product specifications, technical specifications, and standards that guides all of our facility work, is a blueprint for our facility work. We have been updating our Facility Designer Standard and continue to update. We have work to do. We want to make sure that we include only, to remove all of our fossil fuel, fossil fuel burning equipment and replace them with electrical equipment. We want to make sure all our buildings are sustainable and climate resilient. Some other features that we're taking into account on our Facility Designer Standards are introduction of renewable energy, cool roofs, the window system that are energy efficient, and also building automation system that controls the HVAC and heating ventilation for our school, including lighting as well. So that's for our facility enhancement. At the same time, we also are focused on the health, physical health, mental health, and emotional health for our students. And the way it correlates with our facility work, we have introduced the wellness centers into our projects. We are modernizing or building new sporting facilities, new gymnasium, updating our gymnasium, new track and fields, and also our aquatic centers that are going on right now as we are speaking. So these new facilities are inclusive for all students. And at the same time, not only include all the features I explained for the first bullet during, for our Facility Enhancement, they have some additional features. For example, for our track and field, we are using artificial turf that have water conservation features to it. to it. For aquatic centers, we have identified special filtration system that is different from our sand filtration, that's not using the backwashing of the traditional sand filtration. We are saving about hundreds and thousands of gallons of waters annually because of this filtration system. We are having all-electric pool heaters. These are huge electrical equipment, but we are going away with all fossil fuel burning equipment. And so this is how we are introducing sustainability into our sporting facilities. And last but not least, we are committed to removing asphalt from our school campuses and replace them with green park-like areas that, this addresses this extreme heat that we are seeing these days because of the climate change. And also, we want to introduce meaningful indoor and outdoor learning opportunities for students, bringing shade, bringing grass, and allowing the students to have these indoor-outdoor connections. With that, I'm going to hand it back to Alan.
Okay, thank you, Firdos. So we, we kind of highlight some of this work because there has been work that's been ongoing for quite a while. The district has not been idle in this, this area. This has been work that, that we've been moving forward. So, so really to kind of highlight that the time is now and the time is right for us to make a bold move into sustainability and, and energy resilience. Really, it also focuses on our Vision 2035 Plan. So through, through a lot of work, working with, with folks that are focused on student outcomes and focused on the work that we do to help support our community, the Sustainability Group was determined to be one of our top nine strategies to move forward, one of our early strategies. We work closely in, in our strategic group with the Vision 35 Plan, working with groups of students, teachers, administrators, community leaders, members of the, of the industry, industry experts, City of Long Beach Sustainability Team, members of our Green Schools Campaign, student, student-driven members, as well as members from staff of the district, both, both our, our district support staff, as well as facilities, maintenance, operations, all of those folks, to really collaborate over the course of, of a period of time to come up with some significant early goals that we wanted to establish with our Vision 35 Plan. And those goals really are, there's three of them. We came up with a goal. Number one was by 2027, we're going to adopt, organize, implement our district-wide sustainability plan. That's why we're here today. We have the first draft that we presented to the board to be able to have this conversation and be able to adopt some of these strategies moving forward. Our second goal was by September of 2025, we wanted to launch a behavioral change program to build awareness and support sustainability-oriented actions across our community. Goal number three was by June of 2026, develop and launch our Equitable Green Schools Initiative. Firdos touched upon it just a little bit, but, and I'll touch a little bit about what that means towards the end of our presentation. Moving forward, as, as a major element of our, of our Vision 2035 work, which is engaging with our community and keeping our community a major element of the work that we do, we established a Climate and Sustainability Task Force. So this is a group of individuals across our industry and across our community, teachers, community members, administrators, and others that come together to help the district, to really provide guidance and support, that help us to really understand what we can do, where, where we should be with this work, and talk about future ways that we can move this, this stuff forward. So Climate and Sustainability Task Force, we have two members of our team here today that are part of that, and they're going to stand up and give us a couple of quick comments about their work on the task force. So we have Luna Salazar, who's a student at Lakewood, and we also have, did I get that right, or was it Soto? Yeah, Lakewood. And we also have Pete Marsh, who's a community advocate, to talk a little bit about our Climate and Sustainability Task Force. So.
Hello, everyone. As Alan mentioned, I'm Luna Salazar. I'm a Rising Senior at Lakewood High School, and I'm also this year's president of our Green Schools Campaign Club. Being a part of this wonderful Climate and Sustainability Task Force has been such a pleasure for myself, but also for our school's club. Being a part of a task force like this that sees and plans and comes together not only to create sustainable initiatives, such as the plan being presented today, has been helpful to knowing what our next steps are as students, as leaders. And being able to know what is going on helps us know that the district is doing what we want to see and what is good for everyone. And I think that is not only a thank you to everyone on the task force, but a thank you to the district itself.
Thanks, Luna. Hello, good morning, good, good morning. Briefly, Pete Marsh, I am lucky enough to be the Chair of your Climate and Sustainability Task Force. I think I'm, I'm the guy who wouldn't stop showing up at meetings. You've heard from me before about the, the benefits of electrification. In the last couple of years, as I've become more and more engrossed in this, I'm lucky enough to be able to be connecting best practices around our energy use in our buildings nationally and locally. So I co-lead the Electrification Action Team for Citizens Climate Lobby. We have about 500 chapters around the country that we're trying to get mobilized and engage locally. I co-chair the Building Decarbonization Committee for the U.S. Green Building Council, California, and I'm recently appointed, but not yet active, on the city's Climate Resilience and Sustainability, Sustainable City Commission Task Force. So what I hope to do is to be able to connect the best practices that are going around nationally with what we're doing here locally, which is really impressive. So delighted to be here and delighted to have a really outstanding group of variety of representations on the task force to be working with. So look forward to, to helping you all do great things. Thank you.
Okay, so a lot of the work that we've been doing with our community, community engagement to ensure that we're moving this plan forward, I want to talk a little bit about baseline results, kind of getting into the numbers a little bit about what we do as a district. One of the first steps we had to do is ask ourselves the question, what's the baseline? What, what is our footprint currently in, in our world? And how do we quantify that? And so we really moved forward through about a 14-month to 16-month program where we began to look at all the district operations, everything from custodial work to transportation to our maintenance department, nutrition services, our energy department, all of those things that, that the district engages in that has some impact. We looked at three different types of impacts or scopes of work that we focused on. The first scope of work are those direct emissions from onsite use of things like burning gas at our school site to heat with, like burning gas at our kitchens to cook with. Those are our direct emissions that, that come from the work that we do. We also have secondary emissions, which is our scope two. That's the things that we buy. So the, the emissions that come from those things that we use, such as electricity that we buy from Southern California Edison, you know, and, and such as the products that we buy that are manufactured elsewhere that produce greenhouse gas emissions that, that we consume in our district. And then the third scope are some of those things that are indirect emissions, things like the power it, it takes to pump the water that we use. So if we, if we use less water, it takes less power, which means less greenhouse gas emissions. The fact that there's a lot of greenhouse gas emissions generated by the trash that we produce. So if we create less trash, that means that we have to put less trash in the landfills, which means that we produce less greenhouse gases directly from that. Those are our scope threes. We didn't include everything in scope three, but those targeted ones that I'll talk about in just a moment to really ensure that we were targeting on, on what our direct or indirect impacts are in, in our community. So here's the net result. This is summary of a lot of different information, and if you really would like that, I could provide that to you. But ultimately, we annually produce something just over about 25,000 metric ton equivalent of greenhouse gas emissions into our community. So 25,000 tons of, of this product is what we produce. Overwhelmingly, our production come, our, of greenhouse gases comes from the use of our electricity and also from our waste production, right? Those things that we, that we send to landfills and, and what those, the, happens to them at landfills and produces greenhouse gases.
Alan, could you give us some kind of reference point? Like, what, what is 25,000 metric tons relative to?
Yeah, we actually had a slide in here that we ended up pulling out about, about what, about some of the, the equivalent. So I'm going to actually look over and phone a friend, one of our environmental scientists that's with us here today. Yeah, somewhere around 3,200 single-family homes equivalent. Yeah, just, just to put it in the basement.
And if I'm a global CO2 equivalent emissions from all of humanity, 50 billion tons.
Yeah, yeah. But there's clearly some opportunities, looking just, just, just at the summary numbers where we would focus some activities to get the best benefit with this goal of reducing greenhouse gas emissions as we move forward. So really, if we charted out, and I'll just orient you with this chart, if we asked the question, what if we did nothing? What if we just did nothing, right? We would result in about a 50-some percent reduction in our greenhouse gases. And that's largely because the state has mandated all of our utility providers to change the way that they provide the power to our, to our school districts. So the, the grid will become clean by 2045, according to current state goals. So if we did nothing, we would benefit merely from that, but that's not what we're suggesting. We also mapped out, which is the second line below, we said, what if we just continued with the things that we already know we're going to do? You know, Firdos talked about the work that she's doing with the facilities program. We talked about a lot of other work that's happening across the district for things like, like reducing water usage and waste usage and those kind of things. So if we plotted out our, our business as planned, you'll see that we already are showing a net improvement just going with what we already plan on doing right now, which is significant, which just shows that we have not been ignoring this issue as, as a community and as a district moving forward. So that's a, kind of a big pat on our back as we move forward. But there's lots of opportunities here to create even more savings, which is what we're detailing out in, into our plan. So, so based on those frame, based on that information that we generated through our baseline assessments, we started creating a framework to say, how could we, how could we improve that? So the document that we provided to the board and which will be posted on our website for the community as well, is our, is our draft District's Long Range Sustainability Plan. It really engages with multiple elements of what we can do as a district to improve upon that, to be even better stewards with our, with our community. We really identified, moving forward, three what we call main priorities or main aggressive strategies that, that we wanted to move forward with. We detail them out here, basically in, in very kind of high level. Priority one are those solutions that not only help us to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions across the district, but also have a secondary benefit of saving us money. So one of the big ones there is solar power. So we have, we have, we're currently, the board just recently approved a contract for 16 sites to install new solar, solar systems at those sites. Those will have not only the ability to take us off the grid and help steepen that curve so that we're actually saving, saving greenhouse gases earlier, but we have the resulting energy savings that goes back into our general fund and can be used to continue to help support students and student outcomes across the district. We also have our priority two. Those are, those are improvements that really have a net reduction in our overall greenhouse gases, such as, as we mentioned, electrifying our HVAC, HVAC units, but they have a capital cost. And it's kind of an unknown capital cost at this point. So it'll end up costing us some, some dollars. Now, we may save on the long-term operational aspects of, of the equipment, and there may even be areas where we're waiting for the technology to evolve so that it can be able to handle some of the, some of the work that we needed. But there's clearly areas of improvement here as we evolve our facilities program into the future to focus on these areas where we can institute changes that will end up resulting in additional greenhouse gases. We kind of categorize those as, as priority two. And then there's priority threes, which largely refer to like astroturf type of water savings that'll have a cost impact, but they really don't have any operational savings to us at all, right? They, they really don't save us a whole lot, but we will have that savings of greenhouse gas moving forward. Now, there are secondary benefits, things like improved playability and, and other type of things which Mr. Marsh will be talking about a little bit in, in, as we go through the present, rest of the presentation. So, so these are the main strategies. If we plot those out, I'll just orient you to this graph. The first two lines at the top, you already saw, those are our business as usual and our business as planned model. What we can do by implementing some of these strategies where we go to the next line down is those, those cost savings, additional solar, as we identify sites to put additional solar cells in, in removing ourselves off of that grid, that grid production, we can steepen that curve, right? We can steepen that curve by implementing things like electrification of our kitchen equipment and those type of things, right? And the savings, you, you may ask the savings, or you may notice that some of these lines converge to the right. They all kind of come together. Again, it's because the grid will become clean in 2045. So anything we do now will hasten getting to that clean grid. You may ask why. So a greenhouse gas that's released today stays in our atmosphere forever. The sooner we can begin to stop producing those gases, the better long-term effect we have on our world. So if we, anything saved today is, is continues to compound itself as we move forward so that those savings become even better for our world as we go forward. There is a value to us accelerating those savings. We'll continue to move forward. So our next phase of work, kind of talking about where are we going from here in our plan. Our next phase of work, really, we're going to be bringing back the, the full plan to the board on the September 18th Board Meeting. It's at hopes at that point, we'll be presenting it to the board to, to adopt it and, and so that we can begin implementing the, the components of that plan. We're also, as part of our Behavioral Change Program and to help facilitate and move this, this work forward, the district is currently recruiting for a new Energy and Sustainability Manager that will be singly, I shouldn't say singly, but will be helping to head up and move the, move these initiatives forward across our district. We're also working on implementing long-range greenhouse gas implementation strategies. Now, this is going to be complicated because it involves multiple different departments, both operations, transportation, facilities, and others. And as we talk about, how do we implement some of those priority two goals? There's some technologies that just don't currently exist. There's things that are not readily available in our community to be able, in our industry to be able to implement, but we'll be strategizing through these different departments on how we'll be implementing those into the future. The intent is, this is not a, a one-time document, it's a living document. We'll be continually reevaluating it as we go forward because, as we know, in this arena, new technologies are happening almost every day, and, and we'll continue to stay abreast of that. But there are other, I mentioned it earlier, there's other programmatic benefits to doing this, other than just greenhouse gas emissions. We have student outcome-focused goals here when we talk about, in a little bit later, about literacy and, and how we implement this into the curriculum that we provide. But there's also community-based goals that, that I think Mr. Marsh is going to take a little bit to talk about, so.
All right. Thanks very much, Alan. Yeah, so the single overarching word for this slide and this entire section and the programmatic strategy going forward is co-benefits. There are so many positive outcomes for health and for the environment and for cost as we move forward. I'll pick just one. Alan mentioned electrifying our cooking equipment, our kitchens. That's something we don't think about a lot, and we hear, when we hear about the, the culture wars about gas stoves, we think, oh my God, you can pry my gas stove out of my cold, dead fingers, right? Well, actually, think about what happens when you turn on a burner of methane gas fossil in your home or in your workplace. You're, you're emitting something like 40 carcinogens and toxins and respiratory attack bugs for, to use a silly term. But, so as we change our cooking to electrification, the temperature in the kitchen goes down. What's that famous saying? If you can't stand the heat, get out of the kitchen? Well, actually, what about if we make the kitchen a much more pleasant place to work for all of our food service personnel? So that's perhaps one of the most direct examples, but in almost every way, there are co-benefits. If we have fewer fossil fuel-powered vehicles idling, waiting to pick up kids, whether it's school buses or private vehicles, then we're emitting less emissions right into the noses of the shorter people in our lives who are right there at closer to tailpipe level to breathe that. So all of these strategies in detail combine to lead into all these mutual benefits. I think one of the other things that I'm most excited about is the change in waste management practices. For a few decades, we've focused a lot on recycling, and most of that has been cardboard. For a few decades, we've focused a lot on recycling and most of that has been cardboard and papers and plastics. And we're realizing in the last couple of years just how much of a greenwash that's been by the plastics and oil industry. Something that I think is much more promising and and recycling even of plastics can be done better, but it's a bigger challenge than we knew. Something that's less of a challenge is how we manage our organic waste. You know, either yard waste or in our case, a lot of food waste. There's new state law, we're catching up to that in the school district and in the city. And that has real benefits for reducing greenhouse gases and landfill impacts. So those are sort of specifics about it, Alan, anything else that you can cover?
Yeah, absolutely, thank you, thank you, Pete. Yeah, the the intent here is that there's there's significant co-benefits to this to this work, including the mental mental and physical health of our students as we build cleaner and greener buildings and cleaner and greener schools, that's just better for the overall mental and physical health for for our students as we think about the the way that we put things into our into our schools. Just kind of moving forward, talking a little bit about other elements of our plan as we move this forward. So one of them is our behavioral change program. According to the vision plan, we really wanted to build in a major behavioral change element because the cheapest and 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 most beneficial way of dealing with a lot of these things is to change human behavior. Right, in the the things that we do as humans on our world, we have to be thinking differently. So we have to do things like, and we've all heard about it, maybe our mothers yelled at us, turn the lights off, right? To turn the air off, those kind of basic things really help us. But it goes beyond that, it really goes be to where we can help harness our students to ensure that our students we taught, build clubs and build opportunities at our school site. So really, we were beginning the process of kicking off our community engagement program, really working with our regional and local partners in this work to ensure that the district is a is a member of the overall community as we work towards implementing behavioral change opportunities across our district. Moving on, environmental literacy, this is a major, another major element as we think about where do our students fit in this and and how does this relate to our student outcome and and the work that we do to help educate our students? One of the key tenants of our Vision Thirty Five Plan was really to create students that are global stewards, that really own and and are part of our global global environment. So environmental literacy is a major component of that, so we have both of our students are going to come up now. We have Aubrey and and Luna, Audrey, she cautioned me earlier, I keep saying it wrong, I apologize again openly in public, Audrey. Audrey and Luna will come up and talk to us about what environmental literacy means to them and and how this is incorporated into the work that we do in our schools.
So environmental literacy is very crucial to the goal of reducing greenhouse gas emissions.
Now, in order to bring that together at LBUSD, a three phase plan has been created. Phase one includes a complete curriculum and instructional materials baseline report. Phase two is the creation of an environmental literacy framework and phase three is the implementation of an environmental literacy plan.
So a question is, why is environmental literacy so impactful to both students and staff?
Well, without it, we have situations such as one at Lakewood High School where about three quarters of teachers mentioned during a data collection for recycling bins that students either did not care nor did not, either did not care or did not know about the bins.
Exactly, this is a real problem because students and staff are unaware about environmental issues and proper environmental practices, which results in continuous mistakes such as mixing trash and recycling in the same bin, which happens frequently at my school and it is pretty frustrating to see. And this all results in more waste and landfills. So this happens with students and staff alike and it's all just contribute to more pollution. So but the thing is, schools are all about teaching us about current problems and about our future and giving us useful skills for the for the future. So that's why environmental literacy is so important because with with learning this and learning about the current environmental issues that we are facing, we'll know how to solve them instead of living in blissful ignorance.
Exactly, all of this together just adds on to the importance of how genuinely important it is to have the implementation of an environmental literacy plan like this at LBUSD.
Great, thank you. So we're almost there, so a couple more slides. So the other element I mentioned earlier was about equitable green schools. One of the things that we have to recognize is not not all communities are impacted by environmental changes or environmental issues in our community the same. We have certain issues on parts of our community that are that are much more harsh than than environments that are in other parts of our community. And so one of the goals of our plan is to create an equitable tool that really helps us to 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 track, to understand what those environmental impacts are across our district to ensure that as we begin to move forward with green schools initiatives, when we move though forward with some of those programs that for those was talking about with our facilities program, that we're really recognizing that not all of our communities across our district are being exposed to some of these challenges equitably or equally. So we want to make sure that we address those as we can in alignment with and balance with cost impacts and the availability of funds and in alignment with our larger facilities program. But we really need to make sure that we take take that into account as we go forward to make sure that we're properly addressing our most impacted communities across our district. The last part of this is really is really a reporting tool. So the the greatest work, if we can't report it and we can't show how we're doing this work, it it, a lot of it's for naught. So we really want to make, take time to create reporting metrics that really illustrate how we're moving these issues forward as a community and 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 as a school district and be able to show our community the great work that we're doing to support student achievement and student outcomes through this equitable green schools and and sustainability program. We're currently in the process of developing and implementing a large scale website, which will have everything from this green plan or this sustainable plan to things like, how are we generating power and how many greenhouse gases are we producing at our school site so that we can properly address those and really sing the praises of of great work as as we go forward with this plan. So with that, I've reached the end and it looks like right about on time. So so we are all collectively, I want to thank all the presenters and everybody who was up up here with me today, great job, great job. I've truly, I I I truly have appreciated working with these folks. I will say personally, in my role in the business department, it's rare that I have an opportunity to engage with students in a very direct level. We're just somewhat remote from school sites. What a fantastic opportunity, I mean, it it has been great, really helping to educate and helping to work with those students as we go forward. So it's been a wonderful opportunity and I really appreciate the 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 work that they've done and and their peers have done to help us.
Well, thank you, oh, Dr. Benitez?
Yeah, um, again echoing congratulations and Mr. Edson, I know that you're probably thinking about future podcasts with Aubrey and Luna, Audrey, Audrey. So I I want to hone in, this is open to to all of you and particularly at the school site neighborhood level. On the equi, the last, second to the last slide, Alan, on the equity piece. So some of our schools and school communities are next to seven, ten corridors with more environmental factors impacting. Some of them are in areas with more density, less green space. So could you talk, and I can go on and on, heat mitigation in different parts. You know, we've talked almost every summer since I can remember about sort of the emergency responses that we've had to utilize while at the same time, and I am going to throw some shade here, we have our utilities companies charging us more, preventing us from being producers, right? So notwithstanding the the cost benefits and the additional co-benefits, could you, could we speak more as to what equitable green schools look like, what we're taking into consideration, what we're taking into account? Because I, and I know no one's saying it's a one size fits all or whatever, but going back to our excellence in equity pillar, this will require different kinds of investments, different kinds of priorities. And so when we talk about a facilities master plan, oftentimes we have community folks, as they should say, why are you doing those schools first, why are you doing these things at these schools and not all schools? So can we talk about more what factors, what considerations are being thought through? Because we have a disproportionate negative impact on schools and neighborhoods and communities in certain parts of our districts, whether it's environment, again, if we could, if we could sort of highlight more what that means in that second to the last slide, team?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Benitez, because that that's a great topic and it's one that we're working on now. There's many metrics that you can look at, but the ones that we're looking at now, and by the way, this is still in development as as we're beginning to put together how we're going to develop this matrix. You touched on most of them, things like location, right? Not only location, but location and proximity to other opportunities for students. Our our district has various different densities and other opportunities are available to students depending on where you live, right? Whether you're east, west or north, south, there's there's very different, very different opportunities are available for them, that's a major element. Location as it relates to other gross polluters, whether you're net down near the port, where we all know there's impact from the port, whether you're near our major transportation corridors, freeways, other things. Maybe you live near next, very fairly close to refineries that have that have environmental issues or or gas generation or your electric generation plants that are all part of our community that 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 we deal with. Those are, those are factors. Student population, the density of students in in schools is a factor that needs to be considered. We have certain schools that are less dense, that that children have just more available play space than other than other schools do. What available infrastructure is already in place at the school site to help support students in this area versus lack of that infrastructure, right? The the other like residual environmental factors that may exist in your community, right? Sometimes we have communities where children struggle to even get to a school or to a park because of just environmental factors that are around our community. And then there's also that that socioeconomic landscape that happens in our communities, right? And and a lot of times, children aren't afforded the opportunity to even go to a park and play because they have other things that they need to do or they have family situations such, doesn't allow them to do that. So we really want to capture as many of those to create a true landscape to to equitably look at what what we're doing across our district or where we need to maybe invest the limited dollars that we have to be able to make the biggest impact to our community. So those are things that's still in development as we begin to pull that forward and that'll be a major part of our next iteration of the plan as we develop that.
I saw, you obviously do a great job on energy and and the things that we're going to try and do to accomplish our energy goals. The only thing we do that you're recommending about water at this point is artificial turf. Do you have any other ideas about wa, use of water reduction?
Actually, artificial turf is just one element and that's kind of a big use because we have large expanses of these sports fields across our district that take a lot of water to keep them in playable conditions, that's just one that we highlighted. But embedded in there is also our district's sustainable landscaping program. You may have heard me speak about it before, where the district has recently piloted several sites where we've looked at alternative ways to think about the way that we plant the 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 exterior of our school sites. We did, recently, we did Hamilton Middle School, we also did Robinson, and we also did Keller. So those were some sites that we recently reimagined, we just kind of drew a a blank page and and relooked at what we could put at school sites and they've been favorably received. We've learned, we've learned some things and we'll be implementing those as we go forward in order to eliminate or reduce the amount of water that we have to use. You know, our schools are these kind of fifties models, whether we have these big, large expanses of of green. All of those require water, they all require seeding, they all require things like fertilizers and other stuff in order to keep them looking the way that they were intended to look. We just need to change that preconceived notion of what what a school looks like and in order to really adapt so that we can minimize our impact.
Do we have a a calculation to get us to net zero emissions by a certain date or?
So that that's a great question, we don't, because there are so many impacts towards getting to a true zero. There's a lot of talk about, you know, zero energy or zero carbon. There's just as many conversations about how that may not necessarily be truly capable in today's society, considering the technology that exists in order to be able to get us there. It's more important that we move towards that ultimate goal, recognizing that tomorrow there'll be new technologies developed, that that the the next year, there'll be more more technologies that'll come out. And if we continue to be inquisitive and reach to those new technologies, we will ultimately get to that ultimate zero energy goal. I just don't know that today, it's really a feasibility considering all of the other factors. And Pete and I love to have arguments about this, about this this concept, but yeah, discussions, yeah, not arguments, discussions. But but it's a great discussion because we collaborate with each other and we talk about about possibilities about how we can continue to strive to be the best district.
And you're really to be complimented on the educational aspects of this, I think that's a a a a great gift to to the district to to create all those opportunities for not only student voice in the planning of this, but also to to put some of this into the curriculum and involve people, that's a, that's very instructive.
Yeah, thank you, this is a, I'll say, this has been a unique opportunity, right? Where we, where the business side of the house and our instructional side of the house can collaborate at a very, very high level to really look at how we can have some common goals that really help support the work that we're doing to educate students to be better stewards of the world in the future. They will be our future leaders and the work that we do on the business side to help support that operational aspects of the school district. So it's been, it's been beneficial and it's been a learning opportunity, thank you.
Yes, well, first off, thank you for the presentation, I thought that it was definitely informative when when it talks about all of the early work that was being done by our GSC team and the meetings and Pete coming to the board meetings and sharing details around our district sustainability issues. So to see us already having a draft manual in what I would consider a short time makes me smile. I also can remember going into the very first task force meeting and I remember after the meeting, I called you and I said my standard line, right? What does success look like, right? So we need tangible metrics to confirm that we are moving towards what success will look like. And so to present three goals today also is just another sign of a me feeling hurt, but also that we're moving in the right direction. And so a great job with those items. One of the things that I was happy to see in our packets today and I'm going to be honest, I'm probably hinting at a couple of things here, so just bear with me here. I was talking with our friend David a little bit and I was saying, I was talking a little bit about LEED certification. You shared a little bit about LEED certification, I don't know if everybody knows what LEED certification is. Can you just share a little bit of detail about what LEED certified building would look like or what it what it means, what it is, et cetera, et cetera?
Yeah, I'll, I I won't butcher it and try to remember what LEED stands for, I'll be honest with you. But LEED, LEED is a a program where it establishes both energy and sustainability goals for the buildings that we build. And so there's an organization that establishes essentially levels or tiers of criteria that you can meet, all the way from a LEED Platinum Series building, which is the most energy sustainable. Those are all basically zero net energy, zero carbon buildings that that we can that we can build. There's various tiers available and it really amounts to how we design and build those and the materials that we use to build those building to ensure that we have the lowest possible footprint on our community.
Correct.
Yes.
And so I can remember a couple of board meetings ago, I asked a couple of questions when we talked about the implementation of some of our not sun shades there, the solar solar panels that are going to be installed. And I was, I just brought up the question of have we had that conversation? And so as we sit here today and we're talking about equitable green schools, I was saying, wouldn't it be nice if we had a LEED certified building in some of our more highly dense parts of town? Maybe like central Long Beach or West Long Beach? But do we have any projects that are under construction right now that it could be LEED cert?
Yeah.
We do, we do, we have two, actually, huh? We have Polly in Washington that could potentially be LEED certified. So as we sit here and and talk about So as we sit here and, and talk about equitable green schools, I would like to highly, highly endorse the potential of going LEED certified for both those campuses. And I think that not only does it align with our principles that we've talked about in this manual, but I think that the opportunities are, are, are obvious, right? In regards to their locations and the much-needed support for those communities.
Absolutely, thank you. Yeah, the, the issue with LEEDs, and I'll even say before that, CHIPS, which is, I do know that one, the Collaboration for High Performance in Schools, is, or high, yeah, anyways, I just butchered it, is all of those metrics that they develop, whether it's LEEDs or CHIPS, are great because they have direct and quantifiable, positive impacts back to what we do and how we operate school buildings. And so, we model our design standards on the CHIPS and the LEED guidelines. So, we follow along with all, most of those recommendations, right? Where we stop short in the district is to actually obtain the certification, because it's a quite intensive and a quite costly endeavor to go through the evaluation and certification process, but doesn't have any direct relationship to the work that you're actually putting into the school site. So we, we've, we've used LEED standards, we use CHIPS standards, but we don't actually apply for or, or, or chase to get the certification.
Yeah, when I was 14 years old, my pa-pa used to let me drive his car, and I thought I could drive, but I didn't have a license.
Yeah.
Why do I use that analogy? That's the same thing here. We can follow all the standards we want to, but if we're not certified, then we're not showing our community, we're not confirming to our community that we're taking all of the proper steps to do so. So I, I don't doubt that we're doing the work here, but I think that having that certification just gives us another stance that we're, another strong stance that we're taking all the proper steps.
And on that note, I'm gonna say we need to break for lunch, because we will be back at 1:00 for, I, I don't know if we'll have the students back...
I think the students are done.
Yeah, I think the students are done.
Can we just thank Audrey and Luna for being?
We can thank Audrey and Luna. Absolutely. And do we have other students in the audience here? Can we have our students stand so that they can be recognized?
I'll, I'll, I'll take a moment to plug, so, for, for David, because I know he's gonna do this at, at his next presentation. So, we, in the business department, and specifically in facilities, we, we take very closely our commitment to helping foster future leaders, and specifically future facilities leaders. So these students in the back are all interns who have been working with us throughout the summer, and they've been embedded in our construction projects. We've actually taken them around, we've shown them work that's happening in our school district, working with our architects and our engineers and our contractors and our, and our construction managers, so that they can get a really kind of hands-on approach to the work that's happening today in their community at their schools. So it's been a great opportunity for them, and I think this is the end of their week. They're going back to school real soon, so, so actually, so those are our interns there with us today.
Well, fabulous. So nice to have you with us, and so wonderful to hear about the work going on, but we will take a recess until 1:00 and return, those of us who are returning 1:00 here for the remainder of the facilities presentation. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Welcome back from our break. It was very brief, but that's how it goes. So, we are going to continue with our conversation about facilities. It got started with sustainability, and now we're going to shift right into facilities. And from what I understand, this is going to be more of a show and tell, so I will turn things over to you, Mr. Miranda.
Thank you very much, Board President Craighead, and great to see you, members of the board, Superintendent Baker, senior team, and our millions of audience members still tuned in on YouTube channel, so I appreciate you guys hanging in there. So it's always a privilege to present these facilities updates. We know there's quite a bit going on any given year within our building program. There was quite a bit of those things that were alluded to in the previous presentation, and I'm really here not to highlight all the comings and goings within our building program, because there's far too many. I'm gonna do my best to really speak to the program-level highlights. What are some of the key metrics we've embarked on? What are some of the key large-scale projects we've completed? And tee up some of the projects that are about to get started here relatively soon. So that's my goals. I've also reflected quite a bit, because it's been some time since I'm on the microphone here, right? So it's been some time since we do a large-scale facilities update. We've shifted gears, of course, as a school board and district to, of a clear focus on student outcomes, right? And I've reflected on that as a facilities leader, so has my department, right? Just in terms of where do we fit, right? So we know student outcomes are their absolute focus. I know that full well, of course. I often preach to our team that everybody's here to either teach or support teaching, right? And that's where we play a role, of course. So we talk about these things regularly in our facilities meetings. We talk about the fact that, sure, can we teach and have an instructional space if it's just a space? Of course, can we do so in a better fashion and more creatively if it's a fully renovated or modernized space with high-tech equipment and tools? Most definitely, right? So some of those things I'm going to touch on along the way in the presentation, as we're, of course, embarking on some of these massive, large-scale new efforts, with a few projects in particular. So our agenda, slightly modified, right? We really have more of a two-part agenda going forward, so it's the large-scale building program effort, where I'll take lead. I'm thinking I'll break following our building program update before a slight shift for Alan to handle just a couple of slides at the tail end on heat mitigation strategies. We talked about this around this time last year, right? Where are we? How do we take stock? What are those efforts of the district? Not just facility side of the house, but also maintenance and the other various departments that play a role here. I'll, I'll just kind of tease, we're doing those things we set forth to do last summer, plus quite a bit more, and I don't want to steal Alan's thunder in that regard. So, here's a number of highlights, and Board President Craighead was correct, it's definitely more of a show and tell type of presentation. You all know that's my preferred presentation style, of course. This is one of two slides with actual bullet points, right? The rest of the presentation's going to be images, renderings, pictures, and so on and so forth. I figure we start right where we left off last year, taking stock. Where are we in terms of that absolute board and community priority with respect to installation of HVAC systems, where we did not have HVAC systems dating back to 2016 at the start of Measure E, right? So that first bullet point and sub-bullet speak to where we are, right? We've now completed, actually, we will have completed, within the next two weeks here, 36 total projects. That includes a few projects where we're officially just moving into spaces as we speak, right? So me and a number of the team members are here this afternoon, yet we have plenty of team members out there, you know, still working on these very projects, officially shifting folks into their spaces, making sure these spaces are tidy and, and ready for learning and instruction to occur. There's four projects we officially deem under construction, and I would say kind of at the front end of construction. So that's Gant, Tinter, Milliken, Stanford. Those are all in different phases, right? A lot of our projects are phased, as we know, just because that's really the only way we can embark on these construction improvements in a phased approach in many cases. The kids are still coming over. We're able to leverage and utilize onsite interim housing solutions in many cases. In some cases, a few cases, we do have to leverage other sewing spaces we have in the district, so we can effectively embark on construction. So those are officially underway, and so far, so good. You'll see a few pictures later in the presentation to speak to some of those efforts on the construction side of the house. And then, there's 11 left, right? So if we do the math, there's 11 left. What I want to assure the board and the community on right now is those 11 school sites that remain, we're actively working on. So there's not shovels in the ground, you're not going to see an active construction workforce out there just yet, but that means we're working on the planning efforts, the due diligence efforts, the architectural engineering that comes into preparing those projects to be able to start construction in the next year or two. Of those 11 schools, they're all slated, and on our bond project timeline, accelerated timeline I should allude to, to be completed in the next couple of years. Most of them in 2025. We know there's been other projects, right? And we've included, this is part of our project-level updates and, and memos, there's a number of board approvals you see coming through with regard to shade structures and furniture efforts. These are large-scale projects that cover really the entirety of the district, and both are chugging along, I'll say. So, we definitely need the entirety of this summer stretch to finish up those efforts. Shade structures are, are going in, and really the remaining scope of work for us with respect to shade structures is things that come with. So I don't mean the structure itself and the installation of, of that particular structure on a particular campus. It's as we install those structures and embark on the necessary state agency approvals, we're also required to do a few other things at that same time. Sometimes it's accessibility work, sometimes it's work to modify a restroom or a gate, things of that sort, and that's really where our focus is right now, at the tail end of the shade structure project. With respect to furniture, this has been one of the more exciting projects, and, and really transforms educational spaces for, for student outcomes to improve, right? So, affords the ability for teachers to, to bend and flow and adapt, kind of like we did today in terms of adapting our, our agenda, right? So, setting up in smaller pods, still setting up in traditional rows perhaps, setting up in, in a square-type fashion like we're doing today. The furniture that we've invested heavily in as a district affords us that opportunity. These units are on casters, on wheels, so they're easily movable even by the students themselves, so it's not like we require a teacher or a site-based custodian to do those, those shifts. They happen on the fly, which is incredible. We, you see the numbers there? They're really big numbers in terms of the number of actual pieces that are now installed and in play. This is another one of those project efforts where we need the next week or two to finish up. We, by design, we started on elementary schools and middle schools first, and we left the heavier lift of high school spaces, in particular the comprehensive high schools, for this last phase, and that's where we are now. So we're in Phase 10 of 10 of, of the classroom furniture refreshment update. Things are going well. I'd be remiss if I didn't say this, just to check the sustainability box as well, right? So, usable, flexible furniture, which is modern and incredible, but we've also done our part in terms of being good stewards of the environment, right? So, this is an old metric, I'm gonna read it anyway. When last I checked, we had diverted 123 tons of waste from landfills, just with respect to repurposing old surplus classroom furniture. That older surplus classroom furniture definitely lived its life while it was here, right? Not flexible in nature, but it's still usable, right? So that furniture has now reached 12 different countries, which is pretty cool. It's out there as far as Honduras and Zimbabwe and Zambia. I always reference Texas, too, because it's out there as well. So, I just noted it on the, on the report from our vendor. So, some far, some, you know, some far, some closer. It's out there and in use, which is awesome, right? So I'll continue to provide those metrics as we finish up. The furniture vendor we partnered with for those efforts keeps us up to speed in terms of updating numbers, so we'll make sure we do that before we wrap up and complete that project in its entirety. This last bullet point's an important one. On occasion, I share where we are with respect to pursuing state-matching funds to leverage our local bond dollars, yet it's been a while, and it's definitely been a good chunk of time since I shared it in this regard. So this particular number, 200 million plus, is what, what we've captured just over the past five years. And here's why it's doubly important, I'll say. One, it's helped us leverage our local bond dollars, which is always great. Two, it's really helped us keep to our, our project list. That question has come up by the board in the past. David, have any projects suffered? Is there any project that's going to fall off the list based on things like increased labor cost and increases in construction materials? Things that are very real, right? So the reason I'm alluding to this now is these state-matching funds have allowed us to, to keep to our project list, and basically offset, for the most part, those increases I just named. So those things are very real. Construction costs continue to escalate at a very high rate, way more than the norm over the past couple of years. Labor has been more difficult to, to attain, and I, I, if I'm being 100% honest, I still worry about that, right? Because now we continue to have large-scale projects in this area. I don't mean just our Long Beach Unified Projects, I mean projects in general, right? We have the Olympics coming this way, and there's going to be project efforts on that front, and that starts to take away labor, and we're in essence kind of fighting for the same contractors and subcontractors and workforce. All things we keep an eye on, right? We keep a close tabs on what our neighboring districts are doing and when they're doing it, so we can stack our deck with the project efforts appropriately. Of course, we emphasize how attractive our projects are to hang on to, to our local workforce also, and we're not going to stop those efforts. So that's really the purpose for, for that particular bullet. Switching gears slightly, so this is more of my traditional way of having these presentations, right? So, often I like highlighting what's out there and in the ground, what's coming down the pipeline. That's really what we're going to do in this next segment, with really images and renderings and some pretty cool photos. So Alan introduced our student interns who are still hanging out with us, which is awesome. They've been with us for the past seven weeks, so really kudos. I'll, I'll call you out specifically, Aiden, Lucas, Sarri, Seiri, Alicia. They've been awesome. So, Alan touched on a few points there, and I'll dig a little deeper. There's, somebody asked me out there in, in our industry circles, you know, what do you put your student interns on? And Alan alluded to a number of those things, and you see it here, and you're going to see it in a number of additional transition slides, by the way. So you see them out there in the field, learning the ins and outs of construction. You're going to see them a little later at one of our structural engineer's office, where they actually built bridges, tested them on a seismic machine, reinforced accordingly if, if the structure didn't go up to par, right? We're talking quite a bit about artificial turf of late. There are several projects currently in construction, several more that are going to follow, just to bring every secondary school up to speed. So with that, we thought, why would we talk about that in the office? Let's take them on a field trip and get them out to SoFi, right? So you're going to see an image that reflects just what they did. So when this industry partner asked me, what, what do you have them working on? I said, what do we not have them working on, right? Just yesterday, they were with us, hand in hand, side by side, interviewing construction management firms for the Poly project, right? So, everything we've been doing in the world of facilities, these interns have been doing with us. The feedback, the questions they, they pose, the takeaways they get from any one of these sessions is incredible. So like Alan alluded to earlier, I'm beyond impressed. I look forward to continuing on with that program every summer. Just, just yesterday, one of them asked me, is there an internship program year-round, right? So I said, hold that thought, perhaps, right? So, I would love it if we had that type of opportunity. So now's also a good time for me to introduce two of my partners from the facilities department. You met Ferdoso Fazelli, who co-presented with Alan earlier. There's also Dana Grudem here in the crowd, and Chantel, who's hiding in the background back there.
I think you're all there.
You know? Who's been here all day? All instrumental players in, in terms of everything we do, right? They piece this presentation together, these are their projects. I'm in essence the funny face that gets to come up here and, and speak to it, but it's their work.
Can you share their roles, specifically, so the board knows?
Yes, yes. Thank you, Dr. Baker. So their particular rose, roles. Ferdoso Fazelli, Senior Program Manager, with more of a focus on the construction side of the house. The day-in, day-in, week-out construction efforts. With Dana Grudem, more of a focus on planning and design side of the house, program management, right? So when I allude to the fact that we, we stack the deck, we phase projects, we work in partnership with our architects and engineers, that's primarily Dana and her team's charge. There's overlap by design, right? So we always want construction and planning side of the house talking, right? Right-hand talking to the left, and those two do a great job of that. Chantel, who I alluded to, who's hiding in the back, is our Assistant Director of Public Information, works closely with the communications team for the district, yet works very closely on our building program. And there's a few highlights, and, and kudos, I'll throw her away later in the presentation as well. So here come the images. This one's one of my favorites. So, i-if you're a baseball fan, even if you're not, maybe you've heard of the Green Monster over in Boston, we now have our own Green Monster-like retaining wall over at Avalon. And this is one of my favorites, not just because of its large scale and, and wow factor, but it's serving a purpose. So, when I think of equity in school sites and, and perhaps doing more on one school versus another, this jumps out to me. Existing footprint of Avalon's field, they only have one field for a K-12 school. It's very large if you look at the left-field portion of the school, and very small if you were to look at the right-field portion of the school. Alan and I could hit a homerun on the right-field side, which is not saying much, right? It was short. So for us, we thought, how do we work creatively with our building partners and, and engineers? And this is that creativity. It's let's build into the slope, let's create this massive retaining wall to hold that dirt back and on the slope safely, and give us more footprint. So what we've been able to gain is as large a footprint as we can on that right-field side of the field for baseball. It also afforded us the ability to have a, a field that intersects, that's the right size for soccer and football and other programs out there. That would not have been possible without that retaining wall effort. And not as large as the Green Monster in Boston, but not too far off either. This is Hamilton. I like these images, again, that have that wow factor in terms of something different, large-scale equipment that's out there on our school sites, and just the logistics that, that come with these large-scale construction efforts, right? So Chantel's done a good job of, of being So Chantel's done a good job of being very neighborly on our behalf, as our neighbors call in with wonderings. What's going on at Hamilton? What's going on down the street at this other school site? We do our best to get on the front end of that via community meetings and other sources of information, yet Chantel's been instrumental in taking it an extra step, right? And that's been awesome. What you see here is what we call deep soil mixing. So there are certain parts of our district boundary in liquefaction zones and just with different soil conditions and characteristics. This is one of those particular school sites where we just have to do more before we start our vertical construction efforts, right? It's stabilizing the soils, if I'm to explain it simply. And that entailed a couple months, if I remember correctly. So a lot of work that happens on the front end before we actually have, you know, shovels in the ground and sticks going vertical. Butler School, we talked about this one about a year ago as well, right? As we venture into the accelerated Measure E HVAC installation schedule, as we venture into the first phase of Measure Q projects, big thank you to the community for the support there in terms of Measure Q bond. We're going full force, right? So we've discussed over the past year or two that we're gonna have this peak in the building program. And for a long time, me and the team talked about it's two years out, it's one year out. Now it's here. It is absolutely here. As we looked out from a distance, though, what we took notice of is because of Butler's central location, it is one of those swing-space facilities for us that has been used for other schools over the years, and it's helped us tremendously. Yet as we projected and mapped out the entirety of the building program for the next 12 to 15 years, what we saw is we need to use Butler several times. It's actually not gonna have a breather, right? So we project Washington being the next occupant of Butler. They're gonna be out there for the life of the project, which spans several years. Yet as soon as Washington goes back home to their incredible new facilities, we're gonna have the next school coming over, followed by the next, followed by the next. So we saw this window of opportunity over the past year to revamp and enhance our facilities at Butler as well. And that's what we've been doing. So working in partnership with an architect and a contractor. It's tough to gauge here, the photo may not give it justice, but if you were to look at this building, especially with our architectural partners, that they find a lot of interesting characteristics and details of the architecture of the school, yet it left a lot to be desired in terms of the aesthetic nature of the campus, right? So now we have fully painted, you can see kind of more of a white tone instead of just looking at concrete for the entirety of the school campus. There's blue trim and blue accents that make the campus pop a little more as best we can. But we've done quite a bit of work in the interior spaces, too. So things like finishes, flooring, lighting, technology, right? Because again, we know it's our window, as we have different occupants coming over, let's bring this school up to par as best we can within a short timeframe. It's just a better learning environment for those students that are coming over. I've been challenged in the past to continue to share a few of what I call the boring images, and there's a few coming in here. And maybe they're not, right? So what we see here is infrastructure work. I alluded to the fact that we're now officially underway at Milliken High School. For Milliken and for several of our project efforts, it all starts with the infrastructure work. We can't go in there and start installing HVAC systems and other elements and features at these modernized school sites if, when we hit the light switch, they're not gonna work, right? So these facilities are all older, they weren't designed to have HVAC and some of these other enhancements that we're installing now. So in many cases, almost every case, we have to start with electrical upgrades. That's what you see here, right? So some of the infrastructure that's going in. This was quite the massive effort this summer. We did our best to continue to accommodate students and staff and different facility users, to be able to continue hosting events out here as best we could, right? So the work and the fence lines continue to shift with the various phases as the work kind of traversed across the different parts of the campus. Yet it's going well, is what I wanna highlight. This particular image is one I've never shared, yet I'm glad we're doing it now. It's scary, number one. Yet I wanna allude to something that we talk about yet don't share images on this front. It's unforeseen conditions, right? So when we embark and enter into contracts with our general contractors, we have project budgets, it's we start with estimates, then we make the numbers real with subcontractor bids, yet there's always a line item in our projects for unforeseen conditions. And I thought, wouldn't it be cool if I show a photo that speaks to an unforeseen condition? It's this, right? It's rotted infrastructure and wood out there at Bernie Elementary. So we look for hints, we partner with our maintenance side of the house to look for termite damage and things of that sort, test accordingly when we have hints of issues that could be out there. Yet some of these things, we don't know until we uncover and start demolition phases and preparation phases for actual construction. We address this, so I don't have a photo that shows this revamped work, yet rest assured, it's no longer in that condition, right? So we would not dare drywall and close down these surfaces without repairing what we encounter out there. And this is just one sample scenario.
Real quick, sorry, Mr. Miranda, would this, or examples like this, be the types of things that are in our business department consent calendar as an increased or amended contract?
Correct, correct.
So when we get, like, when we wonder, like, how did it go from 1.5 million to an increase of 2.2 million?
That's...
These are the examples.
So that's one example, Dr. Benitez. The second large example, though, is when we start from an early place of design, where we're just estimating what the work's gonna look like. And then we get to a secondary point where we've now finished our design uncovered, perhaps some unforeseen conditions, reach out to subcontractors to bid the work based on the new market conditions. That's the other factor where we have large-scale increases. I should highlight the fact that we also are showing a completed classroom, right? So you see some of what I described earlier, where at that point in time, we're still moving the furnishings and things of that sort. Yet you should also see the fresh carpet, the fresh paint, the LED lighting, natural light coming into this space as well, which is awesome. See, I definitely would not call these next images boring, these are pretty cool. So aerial images, a few of these we grabbed from one of our contractors, a few we grabbed with the help of marketing and media services, so kudos to our partners there. The work has advanced more than what you're seeing up there now. So if you were to drive out to Lakewood or Wilson, you're gonna see concrete poured in the actual pool area now as well, massive pours, working in concert and collaboration with our city partners as well. With Wilson, we had to close the street down, right? Just to have that many trucks out there lined up to pour concrete into that particular swimming pool area. So again, they're advanced, yet I like these two images because they give us context. Just where do these swimming pools sit in relation to other facilities? I'll orient us here in a second as well. And how much space do they take up? So these aerials really start painting that picture. So this is Wilson High School. Zemino is to the left of this image. So we would see the Wilson campus to the left of that. We would envision the tennis courts to the bottom of this image, and that kind of gives us the orientation of what we're looking at on this campus. I think it's difficult to gauge the scale of how much of a footprint a 51-and-a-half-meter pool takes up. It's a lot, right? So there's been conversation with regard to not just the aquatic center and maximizing and doing our best to have these Olympic-sized pools, which are gonna be incredible. But there's been conversation also in the past with regard to our locker room facility and support facilities in terms of is there space to make those bigger? You see it there, right? You kind of see the carve-out for those support facilities I just alluded to. We've maximized the footprint as best we can. This is Lakewood. So similar concept, we do have a base scope of work, so something we're trying to emulate and repeat across the comprehensive high schools in terms of the 51-and-a-half-meter pool, having a shallow end, having a deep end. Those project details where we had collaboration and conversation with the various stakeholders, the one piece that will differ from school to school based on site constraints is probably what you're seeing here now. So this pool's just oriented a little different. We're still installing the same amount of bleachers and lights and things of that sort, yet those support facilities I described, the locker facility, the mechanical building, may just be in a different area of that aquatic center, right? So instead of the west side or the south side, maybe we're separating the buildings, right? Just to make them all fit. We're in design on the other comprehensive high schools in terms of their aquatic centers as well. So Jordan, Poly, Milliken, all projects that we're working closely with our architectural partners on, and they'll just follow suit, right? So those are all coming as well. Of course, here we see our smiling student interns, which is awesome as we transition.
Just a note that during the break, I asked student interns what their favorite experience was as an intern, and several of them named going out to the aquatic center sites when they were in progress as part of their favorite highlight from the internship.
That's so great. Our contractors, our construction managers, our project inspectors, all so happy to collaborate and communicate with our interns as well, which was great. So for projects and planning, I'm really gonna, even though there's several, in the interest of time, I'm really gonna focus in on the two larger ones. Mr. Miller teased them earlier in terms of our efforts at Washington and Poly. Some of the larger projects we've ever had in our district history. The projects have several similarities, right? So large student enrollments, west and central portion of the district boundary, high density, for sure. And two particular school sites, and for me, as I reflected on these, right? I thought about our efforts to date at Jordan as well. So we've invested quite heavily at Jordan High School. I'm very unapologetic about the fact that we've done so, right? Because the school has completely transformed. I'm equally unapologetic about what we're about to do at Washington and Poly, right? These schools are different. They started as HVAC modernization projects that were on our project list as well. And as we took a deeper dive and conducted density studies and just looked at the shape and condition of those buildings, we knew they needed way more than just HVAC and our base scope of work. And that's why the projects are what they are now. So I'm gonna start with Poly High School. We unveiled the renderings you're about to see at a town hall meeting at Poly High School on May 21st. Mr. Miller, thank you for being there as well. And we definitely heard some oohs and ahs out there in the crowd. They're incredible images and really just set forth what's about to occur over at Poly High School. So there's a lot of excitement, I think there's a buzz generated. If anything, folks can't wait for us to get started, and we're about to get started. So I'll speak more to that in a second here as well. The second piece and the second area I wanna give Chantel kudos on is Chantel House helped us re-envision how transparent we are with the information we gather and accumulate at these community meetings, right? So at this community meeting, there was a pretty good turnout and good questions that were posed at that particular session. So Chantel has helped us summarize the Q&amp;A portion of that presentation, including the presentation itself, and post it on our bonds website so everybody can see, right? So it's not just for those 60 or 70 or 80 folks who were in attendance, it's let's post that and publish it so everybody gets eyes on that information. So here they are. Just to orient us here, right? Because this is very different from the Poly we all know and love today, right? In terms of the building footprint. It's really the result of long efforts and collaboration with a planning committee we established early on, which was inclusive of parents and students and teachers and community members to give us input with regard to how we can transform Poly. We then set up focus groups with various different department leaders and, you know, on the instruction and non-instruction side of the house to gauge their feedback with respect to what we should do to transform Poly as well. And then we've continued that dialogue with our architectural partner and various other stakeholders, gathered additional community feedback along the way to get us to where we are now. So this particular image you're seeing is a revamped entrance to Poly High School. We knew we needed some signature buildings on a certain part of this campus. We heard loud and clear, and we also agreed that we need a more identifiable point of entry to the site. If you've been to Poly, you've probably wondered, where do I go, right? Where is the actual point of entry to this particular school site? That should not be a problem going forward. This is it, right? So this is Jack Rabbit Lane you're looking at.
That was gonna be my question.
I think...
Is it Jack Rabbit Lane?
Member Lopez was about to ask that question, thank you. So this is Jack Rabbit Lane we're looking at. Signature buildings, clear and identifiable point of entry, large buildings, I'll allude to this a little more as we get into the rest of these renderings, we've gotta go vertical, right? The only way to still have outdoor learning spaces and collaboration spaces and gain some footprint on these highly dense campus is to go vertical and build up. So these are large buildings, yet it's looking good. You definitely see the hints of green in here to kind of still speak to the Poly image that we know and love. There's one piece you're yet to see here, but you're gonna see later on. And by later on, not today, in the future, but how we're introducing hints of yellow as well. And sometimes it's in the planting and landscaping and intentional efforts in that regard. So what you're looking at here, again, focal point of entry for students. Further down, and actually not pictured today, is a focal point of entry for an athletics plaza as well. So we wanted clear and distinct differentiation and points of entry for those two particular areas. At a distance, what you see in that taller building is the new gymnasium. So a couple additional new buildings, and just as a reminder, Poly's transformation is a combination of new construction and modernization. There are certain buildings we're able to maintain and fully renovate in a large-scale way. Traditional buildings with a lot of history and function, a lot of preservation efforts on our side, just with certain artifacts as well. So a mixed bag, right? Some heavy modernization mixed in with some reconstruction or new construction. So the view here is 15th Street. So we're standing across the street, kind of on the sidewalk on 15th. What you'll see here, so to the right of this image, and further to the right would be the tennis courts. To the far left of this image would be our science building, as currently constructed over at Poly. So core classroom instruction for the building on the left, quite a few different functions for the building on the right. Spaces for career tech, green automotive technology, medical pathways. So again, as I'm reminded of student outcomes and what we can do, there's a whole lot more we can do with new construction, right? And just elevate, right? Student achievement and things of that sort. Very intentional in terms of still adding hints of pop and Poly character to the architectural design and aesthetic to this campus. An intentional design effort to have the third-story building component of this particular building set back a little, right? So we never wanna be intrusive on any community, right? So these large-scale buildings have a presence. So you see kind of the two-story building component closest to the street side, the three-story building a little tucked back, and that helps us on many fronts. This is a building that will house performing arts, and we have the opportunity here to bring that building closer to the auditorium space, which was very intentional and is just gonna serve us very well going forward. You also start to see different student gathering spaces, landscaped areas. We're doing our best to open up the campus for student gathering spaces as well. And then you see this particular one, this would be the other end of what I described as our student entry, kind of having a student plaza, a student quad. We would not be able to do something like this if we didn't go in with some large-scale demolition efforts and reconstruction efforts and going vertical, as I just described. We're gonna switch gears slightly to Washington Middle School. We're almost at the tail end here, too, we're doing good. So with Washington, again, a lot of similarities, high density, the most dense of any one of our middle schools out there. So we're doing our best to do and achieve the similar things I just described, having new functional spaces, having students where students can gather in outdoor learning environments as best we can on a very tight footprint. We unveiled the project information and renderings for this particular project on May 8th, the largest attended community meeting I've ever been a part of. So well north of 300 people in the crowd, incredible questions, a lot of support for the project and excitement for the project, so we're very happy on that front. We're also, and I should announce right now, if there's anybody from the public listening, one of our next steps here tomorrow is what we call Ride the Route Day. So this particular school site will be shifted to now be housed over at Butler, right? For the next three years. And we have various different route stops along the way, just to make it as least disruptive to our students and communities. So we have a sample Ride the Route Day, and we traditionally do this as well. We open it up, there's no registration required. Parents, students, they can just be out there on those projected stops and see what it's like to get to and from Butler. So that's happening tomorrow, I believe it's 11:00 AM. It's posted on our bonds website, so the information's out there as well.
Yeah, I was just gonna make a plug for that, that all of that information, including the full presentation from the Poly community meeting, the board, it was shared in a board update, but just to remind the community and board members, if you get inquiries, that all of that is already posted, including the bus routes for Washington.
Thank you.
Dr. Baker, does that, or Mr. Miranda, does that include both if you're in an actual car and/or public transportation options? car and/or public transportation options and routes?
This, so Ride the Route Day is really for those that are leveraging our bus transportation.
Got it.
We did emphasize to our community, though, that if you so choose to still drive to school or walk to school or carpool, those are all options. They can even change midstream, right? Maybe it's one of their buddies who says, look, I'm riding the bus, you're not, come and join me. So we make, we're adaptable on that front as well.
And then potentially not for today. So I, none of the schools in my area have undergone either housing at Butler or that large scale of a project. I'm just curious, like, so student, everything is still Washington, but they're physically at Butler? And then how does that get sort of reconciled?
It is, to answer the question simply. They're calling it Washington Plus as they shift over to the Butler campus and really just working closely with our community partners to emphasize the fact that we can still do all those things we did at Washington over at Butler. We have a large field space over at Butler. We have a multipurpose room over at Butler. So that facility basically becomes their, theirs, as their home to meet before school and after school and have their various different functions for the life of this project.
I would add too that the name of Mary Butler School doesn't officially change in the long term. And that's really important. We actually, I personally recently have had contact with the family of Mary Butler and there was a community question on, are you changing the name of the school? And so, you know, just able to communicate with the family that no, this is right now an interim facility and it will be host and have a host name. But as you saw in the image, the official name still is Mary Butler School.
Perfect. So I'll move us along here. We're a little short on time. But these are the images. There's about four images we're gonna share for Washington's transformation. Again, we started from a place of looking to modernize and add HVAC to the existing buildings. We quickly realized we cannot do that. We owe this community quite a bit more. We went so far as to look at preserving one building because it's got a lot of character and history and a rich tradition in terms of some of the design elements there. So we're still gonna work as best we can to preserve and reintroduce some of those artifacts that we have from the old building into the new building. There's been a lot of interest from the community as we talk to them with respect to the murals that were on this particular campus. And we've purposely left certain areas as blank canvases for future murals in the new Washington Middle School. The area you're looking at here is our current front of the school, I'll call it, kind of the main office. It sits here, right? So no, I'm sorry, the opposite of Pacific. Cedar, I'm sorry. So this is the Cedar side, right? So as you, you know, would do pickup and drop off on this particular end of the of the campus, this would typically lead us to the front office, right? So one of the highlights here, number one, again, going vertical, large buildings. We've gotta do that on this small 5.1 acre campus. Yet two, we're able to carve out and create a student drop off zone, something the campus sorely needs. So pickup and drop off is very difficult currently. When you think about student safety and pedestrian safety and community safety, this checks a lot of boxes for scale. If you were to envision the pickup drop off lane over at Browning, this is pretty similar in size. Here you see it, right? Not just the verticality, but what we're trying to achieve. So maximizing this footprint, still keeping core functions here, though, right? These kids still need a place to play, a place to gather. The community really values the field that's out there. So we've been very creative with the help of our architect partners to, in some cases, built into the topography and the slope. In other cases, having underground parking, which is in essence what we've designed on this particular campus. And you start to see just kind of what this, what this building's gonna look like, what these schools are gonna look like. The next couple images really focus in on outdoor learning spaces and having that ability, right? So again, when I think student outcomes and different things we can do, we have our hot days, but we also have warm days and days that are just beautiful out here in Long Beach where we can leverage these outdoor learning environments. So the fact that we've gone vertical and mostly stuck to the perimeter of our building, of our site footprint, has allowed us to keep this good corridor at the center of the campus for planting, for gathering, for shade areas, and so on and so forth. And you see, it actually looks quite large, right? So this also helps from a campus safety perspective in terms of line of sight and supervision, right? As currently constructed, we struggle there. As newly constructed, I think that's gonna help us in a large way. And then my last slide before I have Alan cover just a couple slides, and I think we'll have him cover those two slides and then we'll go into Q and A, just in the interest of time as well. But it's just really where are we with respect to the Community Workforce Development Agreement? We want to make sure we continue to highlight just our next steps in particular. This particular agreement started in January 2020. It was actually close to when I started with the district. So I always remember that date. It's coming to an expiration, right? Because it was a five-year pilot, expires in January of 2025, which is just around the corner. So Alan and I and for those have been in communication with our trade council partners. We have a new representative representing OC and LA areas. So we've met with Andrew Gonzalez of late, just to continue the dialogue. You know, what would a potential expansion or extension of this agreement look like as we go into the future? Our next logical next step is how do we do, how do we do with respect to the metrics that we set forth in our agreement, right? In terms of offering up scholarships to disadvantaged students or community members, priority pathways for our disadvantaged, right? And doing things of that sort. And our, of course, our local hire percentages, right? Which were up to 40% from 20% historically. So that's something we owe the board and our community in terms of our next step. Yet that's forthcoming, is what I wanted to assure you of. With that, Alan, I think we have you cover maybe the next two slides quickly and then we can open it up to some Q and A.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you, Dave. Yeah, I wanted to take, we wanted to take a moment today and talk to you a little bit about, as we did last year, about our heat mitigation work that's currently ongoing in the district. So clearly, over the last few days, we've all experienced significant upticks in heat. And this is something that just seemed to become pervasive in our community as our society and our world deals with the climate change and other mitigating impacts that have direct impacts on our students' environments that we're in. So specifically, just to kind of reassure the board and the community that we are really beginning currently, we've already started this effort to really engage with school sites to make sure that they're as best prepared for the start of school as they possibly can be. Just reminding the community that we put in chilled water dispensers in every classroom space at all of the school sites that do not have currently air conditioning. So these are our chilled water dispensers so that the children have the availability of cool water when they go into their classroom, a little bit of a small respite from the, from the heat. We've also are currently, we provided in the past, but we're currently going through a district-wide survey of all school sites that don't have air conditioning to ensure that we've provided fans. We've provided both pedestal fans as well as box fans at school sites because although it doesn't really replace air conditioning, it does create a bit of air movement. So it doesn't become stagnant and additional heat builds up in those spaces that we can keep that air moving through those buildings to create that flow to help bring in fresh air into those spaces. We also implemented a program to, for window coverings. So one of the best ways to ensure heat inside of a classroom stays manageable is to keep that, those radiant heat out. You know, the sun that shines in through the windows, lands on your floor, your desk, your walls, and actually just heats up those interior spaces. So we've been through an entire program at all of these school sites to ensure that all of the window coverings are in place. They're workable. They're not broken. They're ready to go. So the teachers have the ability to shade those windows, to create a shady environment, which does, has a direct impact on the heat that builds up inside of classrooms. That, in combination with fans and air movement, will help as well. We also recognized that we have our staff that work in sometimes these spaces that resemble very much a fishbowl, right? With glass all around and are working in these hot environments. So we've reached out in those areas and installed window tinting. Again, keep that hot sun out, reflect it back out into the environment and don't let it build up inside of our classrooms or inside of our office spaces where it can impact either our students or our employees. The other one, the other items I wanted to point out was, we had just finished, and we largely use a lot of our Esser dollars, but we've been going through our entire school district and installing water bottle fillers for all students. So we've replaced some of the old antiquated drinking fountains that many of us knew when we were going to school to now modern ADA accessible and bottle filling stations. This allows students to, number one, hydrate, which is healthier and better for them as they go through school, but have that water readily available for them so that they don't have to go and search out for a, you know, a community water filling station that they can, that they can hydrate from. So we've installed bottle filling stations throughout the district and all of our school sites to help mitigate that. The other point was, we've talked about it several times. We've taken a very aggressive and accelerated stance towards moving the remaining 11 or 12 sites that we have of air conditioning installs forward. Dave talked about, we are now at a point where we're hitting our biggest two to three years that we've seen in our BON program. And that's largely because we have accelerated all of those, those modernizations and HVAC installations on each of those remaining school sites to ensure that we're able to bring those improvements to as many students and teachers as we possibly can. And then the last part is, we are currently in the process of piloting some reflective asphalt coating projects. The idea here is, many of our school sites still have these large expanses of asphalt. And those asphalt's just turn into heat island effects. They just soak up solar energy and they just continue to radiate that energy throughout the day back to the environment. The more of that solar heat that we can keep out of the blacktop, the more positive impact it has to not only the students that are on the blacktop, but to the buildings that surround those large heat, you know, heat sinks that we create. So we're in the process of piloting some reflective coatings on our playgrounds to create better environments, at least keep that heat away from our buildings so it doesn't, it doesn't impact our students.
Like a resin?
No, it's basically a coating material. So many of our blacktops, what you see, the black part, is actually emulsified coating that goes on top of the blacktop, largely to keep the water out so it doesn't deteriorate. New coatings are out there that actually have reflecting abilities. They're lighter in color. They're not black. They're grays. They're lighter colors, which reflect those solar, those solar energies up into the environment instead of absorbing it into the asphalt. So again, it's a pilot program that we're looking at now. We're gonna be monitoring how that improves the environment so that we can incorporate that in future projects. Yeah.
Quick question. From the schools that don't currently have AC, the 11 schools, how are you prioritizing which ones will be in the first phase? So that's, that's one question that I have.
How, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah. So basically, we had our BON project timeline that was established some years back. And what we did is basically accelerate every one of those projects by a year or two. So if a school sat on our project list to be completed in the year 2028 or 2029, we bumped those up by a couple years. So the list was well established some time ago and there's a variety of factors. One of the larger ones is interim housing based, right? So I alluded to Butler. There could be two schools on the list, both due for HVAC renovation, yet I need to move both of them to Butler. I can't do them both at the same time, right? So in some cases, that pushes one school slightly earlier and the next school slightly back, if that helps.
That's right. You did go as that list in the past, yes. So I guess my other question is for the schools that have AC and the windows have been bolted where teachers are unable to open the windows to get fresh air, is there an alternative to that where you can have both, have AC, but then have access to opening those windows for fresh air?
Well, so the answer is currently our standards are to not allow, for energy purposes largely. So opening windows and running the air conditioning are kind of mutually exclusive concepts. We don't really want to do that. Our systems are designed, when you talk about fresh air, to provide highly filtered air into the classrooms, to provide much better air than what's even available in our ambient environment. Our current standard, which goes well above any of the, either Center for Disease Control or any of the ASHRAE, American Society for Heating and Refrigeration Engineers, any of those standards, we go well above that. Recommendations currently are for MERV 13 filters. We, our standard in our district is MERV 16 filters. So to put an equivalency to that, that would be the same type of filtration that's currently used in hospital operating rooms. And so that, it's better for us to leave those windows closed in school sites that have air conditioning and run the air conditioning system, which is designed to be very energy efficient and very effective in providing clean, cool, refreshing air into the classroom to create the best learning environment possible.
And for emergencies, are those windows accessible, like to open for teachers?
There's one, one window in each classroom that is openable. And, and that was in really deference to the ability of a school site, if, so if they would need to, to be able to open that, either because of equipment failure or because they wanted to exit through that window. Yeah. The last improvement that I wanted to point out, and Dave, Dave already talked about it, was shade structures. So we've put shade structures, I think 74 of those across our district. And this is an opportunity for students on hot days to have a respite of shade, an area where they can go, that they can possibly have some instruction outside, maybe in the breeze to be able to, to remove themselves from that, from that environment of the classroom where it may be hot as we go forward. But we also, if you want to click to the next one, we also want to recognize that we have a lot of schools now that have air conditioning. And when those, when that air conditioning goes out, it's just as frustrating for those schools and just as problematic for those schools when, when those systems don't work. So we've begun a program, in fact, it started this week, with our Maintenance and Operations Division. The first thing we've done is reprioritize their work. A lot of times during the summer, a lot of our teams refocus from normal routine repair, maintenance, upkeep type of work, and they go to larger scale summer projects, right? So the first thing we've done is we refocused our maintenance team to get back on to those, those routine equipment checks. Through the benefit of the work that our facilities program has been doing, the vast majority of our air conditioning systems are now digital and we can remotely analyze and work with those. So we've started the process with our Energy Department to systematically turn on and operate all of those air conditioning systems across our district remotely. And we can do a lot of diagnostic work to ensure that it's providing clean air and cool air to our students and they're available. So we're beginning that this week as we go through every system in the district to ensure that it's functioning, operating, looking for those anomalies. We're being very proactive to look for problems so that we can send teams out in advance to resolve those problems prior to students and teachers showing up. In addition to that, we have our custodial crews going through school sites and conducting surveys, looking for areas where they need things, maybe box fans, or they have particular problems that they haven't yet brought to our attention, because they've been focusing at school sites to cleaning classrooms, to preparing classrooms for that summer cleaning work, the floors, walls, ceilings, the things that they do. So again, refocusing our work to ensure that we're verifying that we have all of the things that we need in those classrooms to ensure that those systems are working. In school sites that have those water chillers, making sure that those water chillers are operational and they're working, that there's water available, that we don't just have an empty cooler there waiting for the children to arrive. Really going through a dedicated approach to try to seek out and identify problems before they become an issue the first or second day of school. We really want to be very proactive and it's a very different, it's very change in mindset as we actually are engaging to try to find issues to resolve them well in advance. Systematic approach that we've been doing that scales up all the way until the first week of school, where we'll be all hands on deck. All of our maintenance teams will be out and ensuring that we're responding to any of those issues that come up for the first, the first few days of school. So those are kind of a quick overview of our, of our heat mitigation effort and the work that we're trying to do to be very proactive. And I just have to stop, pause for a minute and tell Dave, this is a shameless Chargers plug right there with the jersey sitting in the back. It's unacceptable.
I couldn't help it.
But we are available for questions.
There is one question you're gonna pose, so I may as well answer it right now. And it's, when are these Washington and Poly projects starting? I missed that. It's a big one. I don't want to miss it, right? So both of those projects officially break ground in the next three to four months. So I think end of this calendar year, we'll be in construction in some form or fashion. For Washington, it's this early phase of work, which is mostly abatement and demolition of the older structures, a lot of earthwork, a lot of demolition, things of that sort. And then we lead into the building construction efforts. For Poly, it's that first phase, which is the interim housing installation. We need to start with interim housing so we can intern shift kids into those spaces and renovate buildings.
And with the unforeseen increase in cost, is there a risk to lowering, like scaling back on the, on the work at Poly and Washington?
I, we have those very conversations all the time. I'm looking at Dana because we just had this very conversation maybe two days ago. I don't want to get there, right? For me, it's how do I chase additional state money, grants, opportunities and partnerships so we can keep our full scope, our full scope?
Okay. Well, unless there are any further questions or comments, I will thank you for that wonderful presentation. I know we're all excited for the projects that are coming down the pike. We appreciate all the work that's been done already. I know you mentioned 36 schools already have completed projects and that's only since 2016, only since 2016. I think that's fabulous. And 74 shade structures. We have 83 school sites, so 74 of them have shade structures. So I, I think we're in, in good shape to face the, you know, climate challenges that we have. Thank you very much. We will take a very brief break because we will be in closed session, but thank you everyone. We have a 5 o'clock meeting for the public this evening. Thank you for joining us.